Well, good morning. I'd like to welcome everyone to the February 4th Commissioner Meeting, and it's a little spring-like. We'll see how many days this lasts. First item on the agenda is roll call and call the meeting to order. So I'd like to call the meeting to order. Commissioner Hoff.
Present.
Commissioner Gozar.
Here.
Commissioner Jones, present.
Would you please just stand and join your pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item three is our public hearing. So we have a public hearing for amendments to the employee handbook. Is there anyone that would like to make public comment on the amendments to the public or to the employee handbook, either in the room or online? Okay, one more time. Anyone want to make public comment on the employee handbook amendments, either in the room or online? Motion closes it.
Oh, well, no, you have two more.
Well, I know on the each one, which one?
Oh, okay. I'll move to close the public hearing for the employee handbook.
Thank you. Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Choked it out there this morning. Motion carries. The second public hearing is Taylor Conditional Use Application CU-01-24. Is there anyone in the room or online that would like to make public comment on the Taylor Conditional Is there anyone that would like to make comment on the Taylor Conditional Use Application CU-01-24 in the room or online? Hearing none. May I have a motion to carry?
Have the motion to close the application CU-01-24 for the public hearing on Taylor Conditional Use.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. The third public hearing is Albany County Land Use Regulation Enforcement Procedures. Is there anyone that would like to make comment on the Albany County Land Use Regulation Enforcement Procedures, either in the room or online? Yes, ma'am.
I think I'm in order. Can I come?
Yes.
If you could give your name.
Your hand was sort of shy.
I'm not.
I know you are.
If you'd like to give your name and where you're from?
Yes.
You don't have to.
Reverend Dr. Sally Palmer. I've lived in Laramie since 1982, 715 South 11th Street. Thank you. And I will be brief because you have a huge agenda there. But I've tracked water issues and land use issues for over 10 years, giving public addresses down in Denver and other places. But I just wanted to come before you now because water is so precious to us. And I got where it comes from. This is a picture of the lake, mountain lakes. But once it enters our water systems, it affects all of our land uses, both here and in Hoback Junction and other places. So I ask you to consider the long term. Last thing I would say is that I co-teach a class with the internationally-known geologist, Dr. Ron Frost. And he has studied aquifers all around the state. But there's some things that you just can't remove from them. And one is benzene by the Southern Passage. Thank you for hearing me, Derek.
Of course. Of course. Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to make comment on the Albany County Land Use Regulation Enforcement Procedures, either in the room or online?
I'll move to close the public hearing. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Do we have any general comments from the public? How are you this morning? Bright and bushy-tailed?
Yeah. My name's Tim Hale. Didn't there used to be a microphone here?
There did. There was.
So we don't need that anymore?
No.
It catches from all the.
Yeah.
We can hear you just fine online. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Adam.
Anyway, I commented about this subject matter before, and I'd like to draw your attention to item 32, consideration for intergovernmental agreement between the city and the county. And I'd like to remind the commissioners that the majority of the people that live in the county live in the county because they don't want to live in the city. And to intermingle these two entities, I think is a detriment to the people that moved into the county. And when you look at the city, they can't seem to handle the infrastructure currently. Snow removal is pretty pitiful. We've got holes in the streets. They can't take care of the streets. There just seems to be a whole multitude of problems that are chronic with the city. And then when you look at the city's, okay, long-term planning, city is probably the hardest thing on economic development. And to marry city and county, I think it'd be really a detriment. I would encourage the commission to vote no, 32. There needs to be a division. There seems to be a power play historically about the city, as if they're a giant tick reaching out and always trying to do the donut. They ought to pay attention to their, if, I think I used the example, if the city of Laramie is the donut hole, and external periphery of the city is the donut, that the city should pay more attention to its hole than the donut. Anyway, I think that there's plenty of evidence to show that people live in the county because they don't like all the regulations that are imposed in the city. And the last thing you need is to burden people in the county with city regulations. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tim.
Yes, sir. Come on up.
Give you the update. I'm, I've waited, like you were saying, nice day. Your other meetings were 20 degrees below zero and five inches below on the ground. So, hey, and I'm glad I waited. I went out and checked it out yesterday. What's going on? They're loading Bob Carson's Southern Army.
Okay.
Spur. That's there. Different cars are doing holes. They were doing the crushed rocket signal. Now it's just powder is what they're getting out. They got another tanker. They're using their compressor to put it through and into the cars. I just noticed dust. So a couple weeks, it was pretty bad. Okay. And then I drove around there yesterday, and I saw they've got big capsules on either side, toes are running. And I figured that's their compressors to help collect the dust. One of those big split inside, it was all laying on the ground out of it. This morning, just before the meeting, and I know they were working, and I'll send I look out, and it was just unreal coming between two cars, which I've never seen, you know. And I don't know if they even knew about it because all of their stuff is on this side, then the cars, and then of course going towards the vet clinic and over that. And it was just pouring out. And I don't, I've never seen, why would it be between cars? I don't, if they didn't see like there was a hole in the line, you know, I don't know. I haven't done anything really to mitigate anything on the ground that I've noticed yet. And it's been better. I can't, Mr. Gozar, thank you very much for contacting them. No kidding. I think that's helping out a lot. I wanted to tell you that personally. I didn't want to text or anything. So I want to thank you for that. Yeah, room for improvement. Maintenance maybe on what they're doing might help a lot. You know, with anything, just I hadn't seen it that, really, it's been improving a lot. And then just this morning, I'm like, whoa. And I don't know if they even, I figure they might have. Got me. Okay?
Thank you.
You're more than welcome. Thank you, guys.
Yes, for bringing us an update on that.
Well, it's been, like I said, I've been wanting to, and I, you know, have your letter, that, your email. I just sent my wife the stuff. I was reading it out over again also. And I'm glad I did wait because I wouldn't have seen this morning probably and then come before. And I didn't want to freeze to death. But thank you very much.
Thanks for the update.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to make public comment, either in the room or online?
I've moved to close public comment. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Do we have any disclosures this morning?
Not for me, Madam Chair. I don't believe I have any.
And I don't believe I have any. Bailey?
Well.
No, I thought you'd correct me if I was amiss here. Do we have any consideration of changes on the agenda?
Yep. I don't have one.
It's a minor one. It's not even a whole item I'm adding. So to number 21, we need to add the Laramie Railroad Depot Association. That agreement came in this morning. I would like to just add it. And then that's the last one.
So like 21A?
No, it'll just actually be in 21. So we, we have Hospice of Laramie, Volunteers of America, and Laramie Railroad Depot Association.
Any other changes to the agenda? May I get a motion for the approval of the consent agenda?
Yeah. I'll move that we approve the consent agenda as presented. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Onto the regular agenda, item eight. Present for consideration Albany County Recreation Board application for scholarship for Pilot Hill in the amount of $100,000 to help with construction of the Pilot Hill Trailhead. Bailey?
So because this is Thad's first time with REC Board, I'm just going to give a quick rundown into also of applicants who've never applied before. So the next 10 items you'll be hearing from all our REC Board applicants. They apply through the county. And then that, then after all the applications have been presented, you guys will then.
List in highest to lowest priority?
Yes.
I did read the packet. All 600 pages of it.
It's been, I know. It's been a very long two weeks. So you'll, we'll put them in order, then we'll have that resolution, and that resolution will be sent to the REC Board along with all the applications. Then I have to get that sent by the first of March. March 24th is our first meeting at REC Board to go over all the applications. And then hopefully the first, or the meeting in April for REC Board, they'll kind of make some decisions. Nothing will be approved, though, until the school district approves their budget in July. But we'll go ahead and move, once that's approved, we'll go ahead and do the agreements after that.
Okay. And as I understand it, the county is one of four recommending agencies.
Correct. So we have the school district, the city, the county, and then the town of Rock River. The past three or four years, we haven't seen anything come from the town of Rock River, though. So it's usually mainly.
And then how many dollars? Because it's, it's one mill.
It is one mill. We also have mills previously that were unused. So I don't have a dollar around.
Okay. So there's no, we don't know what the slice of the pie is going to be?
No, I don't know. I'm, usually it's kind of in the under $700,000, but because of their rolling some mills over or some money over, I don't know what it's going to be. And they haven't given me a number yet.
And Mr. Our Chair and Commissioners, you don't have to make a motion on each of these items. Just make a motion on the resolution. So we just hear them all, but you don't have to make a motion.
Derek, can you give me sharing access to Sarah had a few slides to share?
Three.
You must do.
By each. One more?
There you go.
Bailey, it should be allowed now.
Thank you. All right. Thanks. Thanks, Adam. Sarah, good morning.
Good morning, Madam Chair and Commissioners. Thank you again for allowing me the opportunity to come before you to present this proposal on behalf of the Pilot Hill Recreation and Wildlife Habitat Management Area. I always choose this image as a first slide for the commission. And today in particular, I think it's fitting for this recreation grant ask. This area truly is for the next generation. It's for these young community members who can grow up exploring wild places that we're working on the Pilot Hill area and have come so far in conserving this beautiful landscape. If you'll move to the first slide for me, please. Thank you, Terry. As you know, we are in the process of finishing the last eight or so miles of trails on the property this summer. We also hope to build the entire trailhead so that it is in place and ready for use for visitors who we anticipate will come in even greater numbers to the, to the trailhead. It's located on the east end of Willett Drive here in the, in Albany County, in the city of Laramie. And it's located within a mile of our high school, our middle school, the rec center, numerous soccer and ball fields, the municipal golf course. And it connects directly to the Jacoby Ridge Trail and eventually in the future will also connect to the Sierra Sky Trail. So it really is a tremendous addition to the recreation facilities that are available, not only to the citizens of Albany County, but also to the visitors that we anticipate will come for this specific recreation area. The trail system in the property already extends all the way from town to the top of the mountain and connects with a trail that adjoins through the Forest Service to the two major trail systems up on Old Mountain, the Happy Jack Trail System and the Thai City Trail System. So if you so choose and have the physical ability, you can do over 100 miles of trails from our backyard. Next slide, please. The key features of this, this area that we're going to be building are, include the following. We have a shelter that will be the main gathering space in the area. It'll have capacity for at least 110 people to gather. So if we have a major race event or other activity going on in Laramie, this provides an additional recreation space for community members to utilize. There will be permanent bathrooms, ADA stalls, and will be open year-round. There's a nice drop-off area that was designed specifically at the request of some of the elementary schools, wanting to be sure that when they bring children to the property for summer school and field trips, that they have safe ways to load and unload the students. There'll be parking for 60 standard vehicles and an additional three parking spaces are ADA spaces. There's also designated bus and horse trailer parking and two other gathering spaces so that if something's happening in the main facility, there can be small groups, families picnicking or staging in these other areas. You can move on to the next slide. The main shelter is going to have some seating that will allow teachers to have their children in kind of an amphitheater-style setting where they can either be looking to the west and paying attention to the teacher, or looking to the east, to the landscape on the property. As I mentioned, the restrooms do have two stalls and will be open year-round, and they won't blow over, which is a challenge that we have right now. We'll have recognition for all the donors, including the county and the city, the University of Wyoming, and the numerous thousands of individuals that have contributed to this project. There'll be a water fountain, bike rack, and a small repair station for bicycles. And again, the school bus drop-off and pickup that I think is so critical for this recreation facility in our community. Onto the next slide. The north gathering space again is ADA accessible. It's also located in the region where the horse trailer parking and the horse path access to the recreation area will be located. Commissioner Hoff was in a presentation that I was part of yesterday, and he questioned the amphitheater-style seating there. Really, it's just stone seating that is a half moon shape. And part of the design, one of our board members, Marilyn Kite, who's a horsewoman, said she would love that type of thing in that area because she needs a little assist sometimes getting on and off her horse. So it provides an easy stepping stone for those of us that don't have as much agility as we once did. There'll also be picnic tables there, some interpretive signage about the aquifer and plant identification plaques because the landscaping in the area will feature native plants and, and hopefully serves an educational tool for the remainder of the property as well. Onto the next slide. Terry? Thank you. The south, or Bailey, thank you. The south gathering place is similar to the north one, although it really is also designed with the idea that if there is a race, like the High Plains Harriers host every spring, people can stop there and get their bids. They can go on to the central gathering space to warm up and get ready to take off on the, on the trails for their 25-kilometer race. And you have a little bit of separation, which makes it nice for events. It also will have some sort of artistic installation. Will be paved, and that paved pathway will lead to the street, which will then adjoining to the city pathway that adjoins to our universally accessible trail, Janey's Trail, which is designed to accommodate individuals that have mobility challenges. And again, we'll have shade and native plants and grasses in this area so that people can get out of the sun and be protected from the wind. And next slide. Again, I, I come to you really with a project that I believe is going to be one of the highlights of Laramie's recreation infrastructure. It's going to allow people to recreate more accessibly in the Albany County areas of the Pilot Hill area. It is going to generate revenue for the county and the city. According to the study that we did with the University of Wyoming Center for Business and Economic Analysis, they anticipate that when Pilot Hill is completed, it'll generate $5.8 million in added value to the regional economy, $1 million annually in lodging, sales, and property taxes, and will also support 150, 50 jobs. We know that a lot of that is coming true. We see the influx of visitor spending in our community. And we also can point to at least one business that has said to us, I did a lot of research. I was looking for a place to relocate. I chose Laramie because I knew I could start a bike business here and that it would be profitable. So I think it's, it's serving its purpose. And the last slide, I just, excuse me, two more slides. I just want to point out how this area is already being used and how this trailhead will accommodate some of these user groups. The picture on the top is the Laramie High School Mountain Bike Team. They call themselves the Speed Goats. And they utilize the property. It's so close to the high school, they utilize the property for practices weekly. There's a youth group that also practices on the property throughout the spring, summer, and fall. And they have hosted meat on the property as well and are hoping to be able to attract meats that would include visitors from Colorado, Cheyenne, and the region. The picture on the bottom is our Laramie Middle School cross-country team. They call themselves the Jackalopes. And they have been hosting meat on the property for the last two years with over 500 children participating. In addition to that, the Laramie Rec Center hosts a series of bike races there. The Cathedral Home for Children come out weekly with their, their students. Seniors on the go use it for hikes. We have numerous organizations that come to us with requests to do wildflower geology, aquifer hikes on the property. So it really is, is used extensively. We're also starting to have more and more businesses asking us for opportunities to utilize Pilot Hill for team-building opportunities. And I know that Tri-Hydro highlights Pilot Hill in their recruiting video as a quality-of-life feature for working for their business. The last slide, and I'll let you ask me questions. But again, the emphasis I really want to leave with you and have stick in your memory is the fact that this really is a benefit for the entire community's health and well-being. It offers a wide variety of recreational opportunities for all ages and without barriers economically. You don't have to even own a bicycle to utilize this space. You can come out at any time and get some fresh air and exercise. I've come to you previously, as you know, because this trailhead project came in at bid at almost $1 million over what we had already raised for the project, which was close to $2 million. The county commission has been very thoughtful and generous in your support with this. We go before city council tonight, asking for their support as well. As you can see on the sheet that I gave you, the University of Wyoming has also contributed over $150,000. Primarily, their contributions need to be in personnel, but they are providing the construction manager position fours, which has reduced the cost of the project greatly. They've also given us the land for the trailhead. We also have gone to the Albany County Tourism Board and have other asks that are pending approval by those organizations for us to come forward to bridge this funding. With the support of this grant, we hope to be able to make sure that we can complete, if not all, but the majority of this project this summer so that the area is open for use for visitors to utilize this summer. We may have to phase it a little bit with some of the infrastructure as far as like landscaping applications and some of the other things to next summer. But we hope to not do that. We hope to avoid the rising costs of all of this infrastructure. Are there any questions or any information I missed providing that you might want me to clarify?
Well, the more I hear you speak about this, is this, is your total expenditure just to get the trailhead built, is that going to leave you any money left in the coffers?
We are being very thoughtful about making sure that we also have operating costs. That's a huge concern.
And I'm looking at your, I guess, your P&Ls for a nonprofit. But yeah, I was just curious because it looks like you have about $300,000 beyond.
I'm not sure what document you're looking at, Thad, but we, on this, on the, on the information sheet that I gave you with this, yes, and with our budget, we will have, our operating costs annually are about $250,000.
Okay, okay.
About $100,000 of that is the lease and the liability insurance that we pay. The remainder of it is staffing. And we have, as I said, about eight miles of trail left to construction. We'll be.
Yeah, that was.
Investing heavily in construction.
I think the third or fourth time you talked about it.
No, I know. And it's, it's complicated.
Not necessarily for their consideration.
Yeah. I appreciate your questions, Thad. I, I want to be totally transparent with what we're doing and had just recognized that one of the scariest parts about fundraising for capital, capital projects like this is that you also have to, have to fundraise for your operating expenses. And that's an ongoing expense for Pilot Hill. We're very careful about making sure we're not cutting off our foot to save our toe.
Thank you, sir. And Sarah, Chair, was the land deeded from the University of Wyoming?
No, it was in addition to the 25-year lease agreement that we have with the university for the property that they have. There are two full sections of the property that are the university's land, as you might recall. The majority, the remainder of it is state land. Both of them are under, and then the small section at BLM, all of that is under 25-year lease and management agreements with Pilot Hill. And what the university did was extend their lease by almost two acres to include this land. We don't pay any fees to the University of Wyoming for these leases, but it's not an outright ownership. None of the land is outright ownership under the Pilot Hill nonprofit umbrella.
Thanks for that. I wish it was deeded.
I wish everything was deeded. I, I agree. But, and we do have the opportunity in the future, once this is finished, to, to continue to work toward that direction. We, when we applied with the BLM, we went for a recreation and public purpose lease because there is an opportunity after 10 years of fully utilizing the property as a recreation area to then apply to see if you can purchase it from them at a reduced rate. The office is state land. We would have to really work on some sort of. we would have to really work on some sort of different model for the land because that is state school trust land but I do agree with you I think if somehow all of this property could become county owned and managed in the future that would be the ideal situation.
Yeah, this particular piece because we're putting 2 million plus improvements onto something we don't own in 25 years if that were to go away the university would have a really nice upgraded 2 million dollars investment that they did not put into it and so I'm a little concerned about that I would love the university to be magnanimous about this and just deed this to Pilot Hill because I feel like they should because we're putting 2.2 million dollars in and they're putting construction management into the ground and so that's neither here nor there that's just my observation about this and then also have you approached the tourism board if if this is gonna put
I actually we made a request to the tourism board last night we asked them for 75,000 dollars and I don't have the response from that my there is a new pool of funding through Albany County Tourism that is supported by the state tourism it's destination development funds and those funds are specifically earmarked for allowing communities to become tourism ready for visits so they aren't restricted like the other monies that the tourism board has that are restricted specifically to marketing for tourism I think the state finally realized that a lot of these small towns were marketing for people to come visit them but they didn't have infrastructure to support that and they were very receptive to the ask I think that they are thinking carefully about their 300,000 dollar allocation which is has to be spent over two years and how those funds will be utilized and also making sure that they're accepting ideas from all kinds of entities in the first round they worked with Laramie Main Street for instance to do wayfinding signage in town I'm sure that there might be other entities that are also interested in some of that that the railroad museum has talked to the Albany County Tourism Board but yes I I definitely feel like that's an appropriate use of those funds and we requested 75,000 and I just wanted to also follow up on your question about the university you know I think I've been really impressed with how careful the university's been about not only knowing the limitations on how they can utilize their funding and what their straight state restrictions are legally and the funds also given to the University of Wyoming Foundation I've met several times with John Stark and with leadership and attorneys to look at whether or not there are any funds that donors have designated that would meet the goals of Pilot Hill as well as of now we did look carefully at the campus beautification fund to see if there was any cash there that could be contributed and unfortunately the donor that set up that fund wasn't didn't feel that that met his philanthropic goals and his designation but they are are working carefully with us I I want all of the land to actually become Albany County land and I do think the university's been a very strong partner in this this project.
Yeah, this piece specifically where we're putting this much.
Yes, I totally agree you know it's it's a risk but I think the whole project's been a risk you know we've we've put our foot out there and risked securing the land at all and and the BLM might have to turn on a dime who knows what the federal government's gonna do but we're we're doing our best to structure it as carefully as we can and I do appreciate your concerns.
Well, when you talk to the university tell one one commissioner is really excited about them being magnanimous and deeding this piece of their property to this to the Pilot Hill project.
I'll definitely let the trustees know.
Really helpful.
Thank you, I'll let the trustees know.
Since I was in this from the very, very get-go the University of Wyoming has been a tremendous partner in this and I think that they wanted to see this completed and they've helped us all the way through and I believe that I can see concerns but I believe that the university is happy with how this whole process has worked and would want to see it.
I feel that the university recognizes what a benefit it's going to be to the university it's a tremendous recruiting tool the students have already indicated in their admissions forms the reason they choose Wyoming a lot of them choose Wyoming is because of the outdoor recreation opportunities I keep reminding also the UW Foundation and the trustees that if they ever are in a position where they can build a new facility for the golf course we'd like offices and clashing space there as well I I do think there's opportunities to extend this partnership so thank you Commissioner Jones any other questions or details I can address thank you for your consideration.
Caleb, where where was the the money coming from on this?
This is just
This is rec board.
So this is rec board, okay.
Her presentation today is for rec boards. It's not
Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
Chair, I'm gonna turn off this fan if you don't mind.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you.
Adam's not sitting back there today.
I know I never I think I get so used to it.
Well, it's so much quieter than the Fairgrounds fan. And it's warm relatively too. Okay, we will go on to item nine for their presentation which is present for consideration Albany County Rec Board application for scholarship for Medicine Bow Nordic Association in the amount of 11,300 dollars to help with general operations of the association good morning Kelly.
Good morning, speaking of outdoor recreation my name's Kelly Steiner I'm president of the Medicine Bow Nordic Association thank you for your past support MBNA groomed about 17 kilometers of trails out of the Thai City Trailhead under a permit from the Forest Service we also support the packing of the multiple use trails which allow people to fat bike hike, snowshoe, run, ski they work under our permit the Forest Service just wanted one permit up there both the skiing and use of the mud trails are free although we do have many donations MBNA's were very well respected by the Forest Service we get along great with them we have a very stable board of eight volunteer members very low turnover our grooming equipment is in good shape we have relatively new equipment right now a snowmobile that we by the time it's set up for grooming cost about 20,000 dollars we've had the same two groomers for 10 or 15 years it's very common to see a school bus in the Thai City parking lot the fifth graders send the kids up there for PE the Laramie Medical Middle School has 80 or 90 skiers this year which if you think about it is almost a third of the enrollment of the middle school the high school has a very robust team so does UW and all three teams have very longstanding coaches Medicine Bow Nordic has a whiskey program for the little kids it's very popular it books up very quickly so kids of all ages are up there adults of all ages front range Cheyenne Colorado that's it things are great the board's solid we're good financially appreciate your support.
Kelly, how many years has the Nordic Association been doing this?
Gee, Van would know.
I mean it's as long as I can remember.
Me too, I would say I've been in Laramie when I came back 28 years wouldn't surprise me if it was 35 years maybe longer you know the UW ski team started those trails when they had a Division One Ski Team and the early volunteers took over and widened them and added to them it's a lot of work maintaining them in the summer we this past summer we had I think over 200 trees blow over the trail which was mostly volunteer work getting those off the rip balls were a pain yeah those can't be done by hand any questions or?
Yeah, Matt and Chair I was here I go to Colorado to ski 25 dollars is the minimum to ski for one day across country here it's 30 dollars for a year's pass most portable thing I've ever dealt with so thank you for that.
Thank you.
It's amazingly how close and how useful that is to the facility and it's you don't get there early you're not getting a parking spot.
On the weekend and sometimes during the week I've been to many ski areas around Wyoming with following high school ski racing and one thing we have is proximity to town it's quick and easy to get to and compared to the rest of the nation and even the world we have snow we have very consistent long snow season that's very dependable which is important yeah we have a good thing.
Not just in the winter in the summer it's wonderful too.
Yep.
And
Yeah.
My granddaughters love to go up there and they're from Colorado and they just are like an amazement that there's hardly anybody there.
Yeah.
So it's great, yeah.
I I always joke I'll go there on a Monday morning I'm retired I'll see five people and I know four of them. Yeah. Thank you.
Okay, thank you Kelly. Item 10 present for consideration Albany County Recreation Board application for scholarship for Laramie Trap Club in the amount of 15,000 dollars to help with the purchase of clay targets and upgrade technology good morning.
Good morning Commissioners, I am Jesse Ballard I'm the secretary with the Laramie Trap Club and in the past few years you guys have been very supportive in helping us cover the cost of plays at the trap club we basically try and split the costs with you and the main reason for this is allows us to keep the costs of running the club down at the level that it's still affordable for the Albany County community in Albany County we have about 200 or about 360 people that we serve here locally through our trap league we have about 30 shooters and about 30 teams on a regular basis and then standard shooters that come out on the weekends when we have open hours to shoot in addition to our open hours we host three registered shoots every summer and that brings in shooters from around the state plus regionally regional states to come shoot a registered shoot and then every two to three years we host the Wyoming State Shoot that brings in at least 300 shooters and all of their families and it's kind of a week-long event we start on Tuesdays and it runs through Sunday so it's a fairly good economic boom for the city of Laramie and Albany County in addition to helping offset the cost of clay targets another portion of our request this year is 3,000 dollars to help us purchase some technology the Windows 10 operating system goes end of life in October and all of our equipment is 10 plus years old and in order for it to stay secure and stable we need to upgrade all of that equipment so we're asking for one desktop that serves as our main office computer three laptops when we run a registered shoot we have to have a classification station a squatting station and then a cashier station so that's the reason for the three laptops and then our printer scanner we would like to get that replaced as well and we also have a very old off-network point of sale system we're looking to upgrade that to a new point of sale system that also allows us to take credit card payments inclusive to that device with that all answer any questions that might happen.
I really your state shoot is a sight to behold the amount of stuff those folks bring to town and the golf carts and they've got it figured out for sure.
Yes, yes and we've spent a lot of time and energy upgrading the electrical in our facility out there to be able to support the newer fifth wheels that come in we used to have 20 amp services and we had to upgrade most of them to 50 amp services.
No, that's it's a wonderful addition to Albany County.
Awesome. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item 11 present for consideration Albany County Rec Board application for scholarship for the Laramie Rifle Range in the amount of 14,478 dollars and 42 cents to help with ADA access to the range good morning Tom.
Good morning Chair and Commissioners thank you for your time and your previous support which has always been generous and quite helpful to the range our current project is to expand the use of the building that was approved and built last year for our 22 caliber range which will allow handicapped shooters which we now have some as members to be able to access the 22 range the target lines on the 22 range and then build sidewalks from the 22 range to the main clubhouse where the restrooms are on our portion of it we'll be installing grab bars in the restrooms both of which are sized for handicap accessibility this will allow us to have the 100 yard range and the 22 caliber range handicap accessible and we'll put in new parking bumpers and a parking spot for van and a handicap accessible van the Laramie Rifle Range currently has nine over 900 members 300 memberships 322 of them are families so we always assume that's at least two people otherwise we wouldn't pay the extra money so we have about 1,220 members as when we wrote this grant and it's gone up about by 30 since we wrote this the vehicle entries which we can track we could track how many vehicle entries there are we had over 6,000 vehicle entries last year and that doesn't count the public days when the gates are open and people can come in on their own without being tracked we had an expensive year last year building roads and we're going to have to replace our south fence this year because the south fence is off by 10 to 15 yards and so we're gonna have to do that and a surveyor come in and redo it and then we still have some more earthwork and excavation to do in the canyon which is expensive so we are we hosted numerous out-of-state events that attract out-of-state shooters the precision rifle shoot brought in people from all over the west it was a regional match we had 50 shooters out there and they came from as far away as Montana, New Mexico Colorado, Utah, and Kansas and Nebraska and we had over 300 people come to our monthly matches for the precision rifle shooting and over the course of the year we've hosted the Army ROTC Rifle Qualifications the Army ROTC is on affiliate membership and every Friday afternoon they come and use the range they also have hosted the Appleseed Project which trains youth shooters on how to shoot rifle and we held their regional event for the first time last year where they train their instructors and they're scheduled to start again in two weeks for another seven-day event and they've brought people from everywhere west of the Mississippi it is now the good entire half of the nation for their instructors will be coming out there we had almost I think it was almost 25 campers on the range to camp out so we are pretty active and we are a big part of recreation in the county and we appreciate your support you have any questions?
In the canyon you can shoot up to 1,000 yards.
1,250 now.
Which I think is fantastic to have an area that's safe to shoot those really long distances and you guys have done an amazing job out there and the walking And you guys have done an amazing job out there. And the walking trail for twenty-twos is fantastic. It's a wonderful experience for children to learn how to, to walk and hunt and.
Well, we mentioned in our, in our application, the Laramie Archery Range rented that for two days and held an event out there where they brought out all their dummy deer and stuff and put them out there. We had over a hundred people over two days go and shoot that on the walking course. And the archery range is now Tuesday afternoons, they come out and use our archery range to, for their long, long range. They're still at the community center on the west side for up to twenty yards, but they use our range for our long-distance stuff in the summer.
I think it's fantastic that the two groups are working together so well.
Madam Chair, just to put a plug in there, not just for you, Tom, but you, Jesse, you know, all of our, and everybody here. All of our applications come to about seven hundred thousand dollars. That's just our applications. I would, if you have events, approach the tourism board. Lodging taxes do come to that. I can't imagine that all of these will be fully funded. I don't think the money is in the rec center, the rec board. So just think to yourself, what happens if you get a percentage of it and what you'll do with the rest of it, just.
Well, we're, we're committed. We're gonna do it one, one way or another.
Okay.
We're gonna get this project done this year.
Obviously, you see a need for it, so.
Oh, yeah. There's a need for it and it's also, we work on the principle, if you build it, they will come. And we've been doing that for thirty years and it works.
It's it's really an amazing facility out there.
Thank you.
Item twelve, present for consideration Albany County Rec Board application for sponsorship for Albany County Fairgrounds in the amount of one hundred and eighty-five thousand, seven hundred and seventy-one dollars and ninety-one cents to repair roof and gutters on the beef barn and rodeo office.
Good morning, Commissioners. So this application is part of a larger set of projects that we have listed. The last several years, we have been working on some deferred maintenance that has been had out at the fairgrounds and making sure that we are able to take care of those emergency issues when they pop up. The roofs on some of our buildings and then the houses that are out there, we can go through all of that if you would like, but they are in need of some repair or replacement. And so the grant application that I have in front of you is for the roof repair to the beef barn and shooting range, which is our newest building on the property. It's never, at twenty-five years, that was about the life of the roof anyway that was on there originally. And so it's just hit its, its life end and needs to be replaced. The rodeo office, we're guessing was built in the late sixties, early seventies, has had some remodels. The different companies that we did have come give us quotes have estimated that the shingles that are on that roof currently are the original shingles. They're a T-lock and after a good windstorm, we have shingles like confetti across the fairgrounds that we have to go then pick up. That building also has no gutters on it. That is not in this request because the board on top of the twenty-five hundred dollars of matching funds that I, we have set aside for grant opportunities, the board would be able to take on those gutters themselves. So the, the basis for this is the roof on the rodeo office, which we would change from shingles to be a steel roof. And then the multipurpose shooting range beef barn to be able to just have an upgraded roof and fix that, do some major repairs to it. We currently do have a couple of spots in the roof where it does leak into the building. And at this point, it has not caused any major damage. We're just gonna need to change out some insulation. However, if we wait much longer, we could see major damage. And then that would be a whole different conversation to have. So the, I guess I can answer any questions on that, but I wanted to kind of reiterate the other projects that we're seeing on the grounds and I did include this in the application. It is, I think, the last page and it has the quotes that we have gotten for both houses need siding. One more than the other windows. The windows are all old. We have lots of drafts in the houses. We need new roofs. We need new gutters. The house that's over by the range arena, we have major holes in the siding. The skirting needs to be redone. So we have lots of other issues. After this application is complete, I, I'm going to come back in front of you about the other issues, but I kind of wanted to put our major maintenance projects that we need assistance or, or problem solving with in front of the commissioners themselves. So I guess I can answer any questions on what you guys have, just to kind of see what other information I can provide to you.
I'm just trying to figure out from the quotes with buildings, which some of it's pretty straightforward. Was it stone scapes for the, I see OSB listed. That's why I'm wondering if it's not the residential and not.
So for the rodeo office, is that what you're talking about?
I don't see anything for the houses.
That's because the houses are not on this application.
Okay.
This is, I wanted, I gave, I put this sheet in there just so you guys see the major issue, the major projects that we need to take on and the issues that we're running into with some of these buildings. I just put this in there so you guys could see kind of the dollar amount that we're looking at. You know, as an estimate kind of thing. This, the beef barn and rodeo office are included on that sheet just because they are part, part of those projects that we do need to work on.
And the rodeo office is actually, it actually sits to the southeast between the shooting range and the arena?
Northeast, but yes. Yeah.
So it'd be northeast of the shooting range, but southeast of the arena?
Yes.
North, north, yeah, are you, okay.
Okay, you're in the right area. Yeah. So the other thing with the rodeo office, I'm working on being able to utilize the rodeo arena more. I'm in talks with some different rodeo companies to come in. We have spent some money on getting some employees certified at dirt school, we like to call it. And basically that trains them to be able to work and maintain a footing in the arena on top of, you know, the, the soil that we have to put in there for the base layer. We're looking at, we've upgraded equipment for the arena. So we're starting to get some more, some more usage over there as well as the, the folks that come in and ride in the summer for free. We maintain that for them. Jubilee Days is our main user. The high school rodeo has moved out to the fairgrounds. They went back to a fall rodeo, which is great for those kids that don't have to rodeo in the winter and April. And so they have moved out to the fairgrounds and from what I heard last year, everybody liked the fairgrounds a lot more. The setup is easier for them to get in and out of. That building does also host the rodeo office, our showers that we do have available for the, the contestants and then for county fair. We have redone those whenever I first came on. Some of the management prior to me did not winterize the pipes. And we had an ice skating rink in there. And so we have since fixed it, new showers, new on-demand water heater. We put in, so it's a little more efficient. We put in the propane tank as a bulk tank. We have never had to have it refilled so far. So it's saving the fairgrounds money on that aspect. And those showers do get used. Hopefully they'll get used more as we see an increase in usage at the rodeo arena. But they are updated. The rest of the building is solid. We have no other issues. It's just the roof and the gutters at this point.
Taylor, would you expand a little bit on the uses for the beef barn other than as a beef barn?
Yes. So one of my main goals whenever I came in, because we do have the facilities on the fairgrounds that are there, one of my main goals was to increase dual usage. So you'd have more than one event on the fairgrounds on the weekends because that's primarily when our buildings are used. I can pull the exact numbers and send them to you, but we did see a large increase in the last two years in dual usage. We have had, YOTech has held events in the beef barn. We've had quinceañeras. We have, have had weddings. They use the outdoor show ring for their receptions. So we have seen an increase in the dual usage. The other thing that the fairgrounds does, which I'm sure you guys are all aware about, but you may not know the impact, is we store classic cars, boats, RVs. You, we have a sailboat. What else goes in there? The hospital stores their barbecue trailer. We have several other items from community businesses that they store in our facility in the winter and that nets the fairgrounds approximately forty thousand dollars. Give or take on when people drop off and pick up because those are prorated in October and April. So we have increased the total number that we can store. And we're hoping to be able to increase that more with some future changes that we're looking at. But in terms of year-round use, we have increased the dual usage of the beef barn itself. Besides just being a beef barn, in terms of animal use, the dog show does use that as paid grooming. And then we have our large jackpot show for the five oh one C three. And they use that building for one of the show rings and then the sheep and goats and, or the sheep and cattle have traditionally shown over there. This year it will be the sheep and goats that show in that barn. And that is a three-day show that we host almost a thousand entries for about the same number of animal entries that we see at county fair. We have kids that come from five different states. We do usually sanction with one of the show associations. And that nets our five oh one C three about seven thousand dollars a year. And so we're able to put that money back into the fairgrounds and, and sponsor different, different lesser-known areas at the fair. We're looking at doing some facilitation of improvements from directly the five oh one C three. We have had a private donor come through and bought us some equipment through that five oh one C three and that money has gone back into the fairgrounds. Of course, it's, he donated to the five oh one C three and then the five oh one C three donated.
It's just the foundation.
Yeah, well, the alumni association. Yeah, we're separate entities. But that's kind of where the beef barn usage has increased since I came on. I'm not sure by how much. I'd have to go do the math to, to see. But I do have all of our event days on a calendar.
Madam Chair, Taylor, of the mill levy you all received, do you place any towards ground maintenance?
A lot of it.
Do you have a, a number or a, a percentage?
I would say more than half goes to ground maintenance. What we've ran into the last several years is we've had at least three waterline breaks. We've had to dig up and, and Roden Bridge has been gracious enough that we don't have to rent equipment. But since our pipes are aging, nobody really has an accurate map of where the, the pipes are on the facility and could be, you know, just pick a map and see if you're in the right area. So we have been making sure that we map those out accurately when we have to dig them up. So we find out where they go. Last, the last couple of winters, and we ended up having to file an insurance claim last winter. We did have our sewer pipes freeze. We do have issues with that. On one end of our main building, the pipes are only about a foot, foot and a half below the asphalt. It is a very weird system that they put out there. And we've had several plumbers come look at it and they were like, we have no idea how somebody even thought to do this. It's just not a thing. So we have, we spend my guesstimate without looking directly at numbers would be more than half of the mill levy. We do have an increased need for employees because we are seeing more event days. And so we have put, you know, the rest of the majority that's left over out of the mill after maintenance and facilities. We are putting a lot of that towards employees for benefits and their salaries as well. Just because we're getting to the point where we're busy enough and we can't do it with one full-time grounds person and a part-timer, two part-timers.
Yeah, and I just, I think you're doing this, but if, if you're not, or just remind me if you are. We'll probably have to go for special purpose tax and all of those upgrades. Going, doing this way is not really helpful to either the rec board or to you.
Yes.
Because I can't imagine you're gonna get a hundred and eighty-four, even if you get fully funded from the rec board.
And I agree with you a hundred and ten percent.
Yeah.
We actually did put, so our, backtrack a little bit, our sheep and our pig barns. And if you want to come walk through them, you're more than welcome to. Our sheep barn has a really cool strobe light show because our electricity is so old that if anybody turns a fan on, it will make the lights flicker. Kayla laughed because she's seen it. Yeah, it's a great time.
Advanced wiring that gets on.
Yes, we actually are very fortunate that we do have some electricians as four-H parents that bring their tools with them. So when we have problems, I can just call them and they go fix them. So we do have other issues that do need to be addressed as well, and I am working to address those. In specific on the SPECT tax, we do need a new tractor. I put the new tractor on there. The other thing that I put on there was to tear down the sheep and swine barns because they're just ancient. And then put in one big building that would house the sheep, goats, swine at county fair. That would have fourteen-foot doors where we could have more storage of these more modern, larger fifth wheels. And then that would also increase our revenue down the road. We can use it for dual, dual rentals, whatever the case may be. So we are working towards that and I, and I do have things on this SPECT tax that Tracy has been working on. So I, I do have items on there. We are just getting into this process and so we went with the greatest needs first. And I talked with Bailey about which ones to put on the grant because otherwise I didn't want to put six hundred thousand dollars on here just because it's not just for the fairgrounds. It's for everybody in the community. And so that's why it's just the two items rather than all of them that are on our list.
Okay, thank you.
Taylor, do you have the numbers with you today on the number of people that use Albany County Fairgrounds?
No. The number that is in the application does not include our, it's at two hundred and ten thousand. That's strictly events that use the building or any of the facilities, the outdoor rodeo arena, the range arena and the main buildings that are on the grounds. I do not have, because of our camping and our overnight stalling and the way that that's set up, I don't have an accurate number of the number of people that came in a vehicle with one horse as they're traveling through. So our number at the two hundred and ten thousand is strictly folks that come into town for events or things being held on the fairgrounds. That does not include the total number of people that come through our campground, which is open year-round, but right now there's no water because of winter. So that will be turned back on in April and we'll start picking up our, our camping again the first April. Thank you.
I just want to acknowledge that you are at a disadvantage with, that other counties don't have an issue with as there are alternative locations that you have to compete against. And the Hanson Arena is directly in competition with the county site. So you do have to deal with that. So we don't want to necessarily drop the price of fairground usage to try to compete with the university that's got to buy and pay for a facility.
Well, and we're already, our rodeo arena rents for four hundred dollars a day. And if I remember right, it's four hundred dollars for a half a day at Hanson. I, when I came into this position, I reevaluated. There's a, a metric out there that all fair managers use and I happened to get ahold of that equation about your square footage in comparison to your rental rate and then the, the median income in the community. So whenever I came in, I worked on updating things, modernizing and, and just trying to bring us forward. And then I looked at the total of what we charge for each facility. It is not up to the tip-top dollar that that metric said we could be at because it, that was not something that I felt comfortable with increasing that much. And the board approved the, the changes that I put in front of them to increase some of the rental prices because it is getting more expensive to maintain the facility. And we have a large issue with folks that come and rent our main building that because it's not theirs, it doesn't matter if there's a hole put in the wall. Or it doesn't matter if they've clogged up the sinks and we have to bring in somebody to fix part of our plumbing because we couldn't get through the burrito that was in our drain. Legit had a whole burrito.
I've noticed.
Yeah, me, I mean, I'm not either. Nothing shocks me at this point. We did have a mud, a mud pit left in there one time. That was fun to clean out. And I'm pretty sure there's still bent night in the cracks. So it's folks that come out and rent. So we have an added expense beyond their deposit most of the time to bring that building back to an acceptable level for other folks to rent it. We do have some folks that are really great that when there's, you know, a roping dummy's horn ran into the wall, they're great about letting us know right when it happens because the kids are running around roping it. And we fix it right away and it's not that big of an issue. But when we come in and we have plumbing issues and we have problems with our new stove and those types of things, it's, it's an added expense and it costs us employee time. All of the above. The, we've tried to make, we have now, and I've, I'm working on finishing up the updates, but we have now outlawed the use of confetti and glitter inside the building. The last time we had confetti in the building, my grounds crew had to bring over the leaf blower, blew it all into a corner and used a scoop shovel to get it out of the building. And we're still finding glitter in the building. So we're trying to make the facilities better for what we do have. And on that SPECT tax, if you've ever looked, really looked at the siding of the the facilities better for what we do have. And on that SPECT tax, if you've ever looked, really looked at the siding of the activities building, that needs to be replaced. That's the original siding. It's fifty years old. It's been patched with mismatched colors and all the other issues. That is also on the SPECT tax. So I'm trying to be very mindful about the big projects that we do put on either the rec board grant or the SPECT tax, that there are items that we actually need and have a great need for and can justify. And the level of severity, of course.
Thank you.
Thank you, Taylor.
Thank you.
Item thirteen, present for consideration Albany County Rec Board application for sponsorship for YO Elite Storm in the amount of three hundred and ten thousand, seven hundred and twenty-seven dollars and ninety-seven cents. Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. Good morning, commissioners. Is it okay if I share screen for stuff?
Hmm, are you?
I am on the screen.
Yeah.
Yes, I think so.
The backs of your shirts are very impressive.
I know. She was talking about confetti and sparkles, and I'm like, we're all.
I'm guessing there was a large quantity.
Okay, is everyone seeing the screen? Oh, what just happened? They kicked me out of this.
Well, to start, I'm Zoe Pierce. I'm the owner of YO Elite. And then this is Caitlin McKnight, and she's one of the amazing coaches there.
I'm gonna just log into this in a moment. Please. I was in there before.
You can try to send it to me and I can.
To Bailey? Sorry. Just. We just have lots of pretty pictures we love to show.
I know RT's paying attention because I had to email him.
I was on the Zoom when I walked up here.
You know, it's amazing how that happens. I mean, how often you have everything and you tested it and you've gone over it, and then all of a sudden it doesn't work.
Yeah, I think we saved it about ten different times this morning to make sure it was good.
Yeah, we're here. We saw you on the Zoom, and then as soon as you went to present, you dropped off, so.
Adam, you're not blocking her email going through to Bailey, are you?
I haven't seen it come through.
Not you personally, sorry, just the firewall.
Yes.
Would you double-check and make sure you're actually on Wi-Fi, please?
See my outbox.
No, that's different.
I also do have it on a thumb drive, if that's easier. It is in my outbox. Let me send it one more time. Right, I'm on the Wi-Fi.
It's so wonderful when it works, but when it doesn't.
Well, we could just present.
Can you all see my screen?
You can.
Awesome. Okay, well, we're starting out with a little cheesy putting Albany County on top of the pyramid because we are a cheer gym. And if you're not familiar with All-Star Cheer, it is different from traditional sideline cheer. So traditional sideline cheer is where you have cheerleaders chanting to the fans in the stands, and they're trying to get energy for the game that is being played. For All-Star Cheer, there's actually really no cheerleading involved. It's a two-and-a-half-minute high-performance routine that includes pyramids, stunts, tumbling, dance components, stuff like that. So our vision and mission since Ms. Zoe took over the program earlier this year is to create a dedicated cheer facility to help athletes succeed both on and off the mat. So a lot of the athletes that we work with, we've actually known since they were anything. And so we, as coaches, think of ourselves as not just their coach, but also a safe place for them to come to if they are having any problems, but also trying to teach them things like teamwork and trust and work ethic and stuff like that. Our current challenge is right now, we practice in the Wyoming School of Gymnastics. And the biggest challenge has to do with practice time. So since we're sharing it with the gymnasts, we are only allowed in the gym on Sundays and then Monday through Friday, only six thirty to nine P M. We do have some athletes that are five years of age, and so nine P M is quite late for them to be practicing, but we have no other time available. And that also gives us some, or provides, not provides, but gives barriers for growth. So we can't expand our offerings. We're kind of pushed to the limit on the amount of time we have in the gym. We filled it completely. We are in there as much as we possibly can be. And another issue we're running into is all of the commercial properties available in Laramie are not at the right height recommendation. So in order to throw athletes in the air or for athletes to tumble with a lot of power, you have to have at least twenty feet of clearance. And a lot of buildings in Laramie, mostly because of the wind, are not that tall. So we've been having some issues with finding space that's already built that would facilitate this type of rec. We currently serve fifty-plus athletes and that ages three to nineteen. And we offer a couple of different options. We have our competitive teams. We also do a cheer basics rec team, so younger athletes can come in, learn some basic skills before they move on to either a competitive team or one of our showcase teams. Then we also do tumbling classes, private lessons for tumbling, and then we also provide open gyms, which is basically a time for the kids to just come in, work on whatever they want to work on for the day or just get some energy out, you know, have some fun with the equipment. So our goal for this project is to construct a seventy by seventy by twenty feet facility. Next, to support our existing athletes and then also to help us expand our program. So some benefits to having our own facility would be expanding our offerings. We have some ideas that could help fill some gaps in the community that we've identified. We've talked about like mommy and me classes that we haven't seen offered around for smaller children with moms to come and work some skills. We've also thought about homeschool programs could use the gym. We could also do some, you know, expand into maybe adults working with like flexibility and stability of seniors and providing some additional things that the community could take advantage of. And another big thing about having our own dedicated facility is right now we have no outside advertisement. So unless you're familiar with our program, you're not, you're not sure that that's where we practice. The gymnastics sign is up there, but our signs are not. So and we don't really want to step on Rob's toes over at the gymnastics gym either because he's done a lot for us. So the funding request breakdown, we worked with Jason Mitchell, a local contractor here in Laramie. He provided us exact quotes for everything we would possibly need to build the facility. That includes labor costs, equipment costs,
electrical.
Electrical, plumbing, HVAC, insulation, every single possible thing, and it should be itemized on your list. We've also reached out to Tumble Track, which is a cheer equipment or gymnastics equipment provider. And they provided us a quote with all of the basic equipment we would need to get started. Our project timeline would be, our new LSC takes effect in May. And that is something that Zoe worked on. We were kind of thinking about just restarting the program because how it was managed before Zoe took over, there was minimal books, minimal just record of how the business was run. So we are completely restarting that. We have started books. We have started plans for future investments and keeping a reserve fund to help athletes in the future. So that takes me to revenue and sustainability. Our revenue comes from various sources. It's mostly from athlete tuition. So each athlete in the gym typically pays a monthly tuition. And then we also have tumbling classes at ten dollars per class, and that goes for our open gyms as well. And then our recreation team program also pays a monthly tuition. But All-Star Cheer is a very expensive sport, and we understand that Laramie is not as big as the cheer, cheer in Wyoming in general is not as big as it is in Texas. And so we're not expecting parents to pay these crazy prices that you see in other states. And so we really work hard to do some active fundraising for athlete accounts specifically, but also, like I said, we are really working hard to set up a reserve fund so that we can help families in the future if they need it. Now, this takes me to our alternative funding request. This is our first time ever applying for this grant. We did not know what to expect, so we just went for it. But that doesn't mean that we don't have these lower-ball items that would be very beneficial. And we are not sure if we're able to amend the original application, but we could include some lower-ball items that would really help us out this year if we're not able to be funded for the full project. And that would be things like uniforms for our competition team. Athletes' uniforms run upwards of five hundred dollars sometimes. We try to keep it as low as possible. So the number I have here is for twenty athletes, three hundred dollars per uniform. That includes bow, uniform, shoes. And then we also would love to be able to provide some scholarships for a few athletes because we have lost some athletes due to financial reasons. And we just try our best to work with families because we really want this program to grow and we want as many kids as possible that are interested. So we do have an alternative funding request of about twelve thousand dollars. We can get you guys exact quotes if we're able to amend our original application. Community support, so we are the first cheer gym in the state of Wyoming to be invited to the world championships. So that's where you go and compete against the best in the country. And our team in two thousand and twenty-two was the first team in Wyoming to be invited. And we were so excited. We got to fundraising so fast, and we got several of local Laramie businesses to sponsor our kids, and that included their travel costs, their competitions, fees, and it was really exciting. And we tried to, like even, we were invited again this year. It's way more expensive to go this year for some reason, so we have decided not to. But we are going to continue to fundraise for next year because we are hopefully going to get another bid to go there. But we also, you can see us performing at all of the local Laramie events, so at the Fourth of July Parade, Family Night at the Fairgrounds, Back to School Bash. And you'll see us fundraising at local businesses all around, all over town and throughout the whole year, honestly. But yeah, thank you so much for listening and we thank you for your consideration.
So I, I don't know if you even recognize me. I have two daughters, and I will say that the tumbling rates that you guys have are probably a little too low. From a business perspective, it is very reasonable for our kids to go there, and they love doing it. I've got a daughter who stretches daily now. Of you guys, so yeah, if you were to amend, and maybe, and I don't know, is it possible to amend in the timeframe?
Yeah, so.
Because it is a big ask.
I know we saw everyone else.
A position of all or, yeah, all or nothing, and then all of a sudden, yeah.
Right. I would say yes. I have to get all the two rec board by March first. I usually try to do it the week before that, yeah, or so. So I would say get me, if the board is okay with it, to get me a new application with that ability to twelve thousand-ish, if that's what you'd rather go with. Board, does that sound okay to you guys?
Would you recommend that?
I definitely would. Go ahead.
Yeah, I think three hundred thousand is going to be an incredibly huge ask.
Right.
And, but I don't know how to prioritize it without seeing it, which is what we're supposed to do today at Bailey.
I could get you a one-page amendment by the end of the day.
They start to prioritize by the end of the meeting.
By the end of the meeting.
So, well, okay, so I have a question. How many total participants are involved in this?
About fifty-two.
Okay.
Fifty-one or fifty-two.
Yes.
And that's stretched across our competition teams, tumbling classes.
And whoever shows up.
And our rec team.
Yeah. Yeah, we, and I do say that earnestly, that you guys are undercharging for your service. But it does fill a really great niche. But your expanded offering for the homeschool kids and the location, because I don't believe that facility's open during the day.
No.
It's strictly evenings and weekends that it's utilized.
Yeah, our rented time, though, is only allotted for the time that we.
Okay.
So in this conversation, I wrote down some possible places for you guys to look.
Okay, yeah, that would be great.
That would be, one would be the fairgrounds. Okay, because the, it's tall enough. There's also a place called Dally Ridge.
Okay.
That is off of.
Is that tall enough? Is it tall? Yeah.
Yeah, it's tall enough.
Dally, D.
D A L L Y Ridge, and that's off Soldier Springs Road.
Okay, which is.
Yeah, it's real close to where you are now. Also, I don't know about the gym at the Lincoln Center. It may, that may be high enough, too. There's two gyms in the Civic Center, both of which would be high enough. And then Kate, do they do anything with the National Guard Armory? Are there, is there, yeah.
The university owns it now, and I don't.
No, but I'm talking about the.
The main one?
That one's secure.
Not in the evenings, unless it conflicts with drill.
So that could be.
Yeah.
Okay. We appreciate that a lot.
Yeah.
At least a place for signage advertising because that is, yeah.
I mean, even when you walk in the gym, you know, there's nothing really. We have our little door, but besides that.
He hasn't dusted any of yours.
No.
It's a tall building. I don't know how you do it.
This is, this is a really hard ask when, well, just because of the amount of money in the major ask, but when it, when it's not very many people benefit.
Right, yeah.
And I don't mean that to sound bad, but when you compare this to the fairgrounds where there's.
Two hundred and ten thousand.
Yeah, and so.
We did, we'd not get near that, but like, that is our hope with.
Right.
And our own building is that we could have more time, so we could have more athletes.
Right, but in the meantime.
Right.
I think that I would talk to these different places, and then you guys might have some other ideas on places. But I just, I was just trying to think of places that are tall enough.
Right.
And, but yeah, do your amended.
Okay.
And see what we can do.
Okay. Okay.
Can you, you touched on it briefly. Can you just go into a little more depth with the commissioners? So then it hopefully can be enough information that you guys can rank off there.
Yeah.
And the, then the total amount that you're asking.
Okay, these don't include exact quotes, but we do already have the uniform picked out and we've already set the price at 300. So we just said if we have 20, we have 17, 18 athletes on the competition teams right now. So we just allotted for 20. So that'd be 20 times 300 would be 6,000 for uniforms. And then we did that 20 athletes times $90 for their practice wear. It just helps us if they look uniform when they're practicing, just so we can see tweaks to their routines. And then we had scholarships for two athletes, which would be in the price of $4,200. So we're looking total at about 12,000 as an alternative.
Just to speak a little more on like the uniforms. So when you are on a competition team, and this isn't the same for tumbling, they can wear whatever. They don't need the uniform for competition teams. We travel once a month and we go to, it's mainly Colorado only because there's nothing else around here. But when you're on a competition team, you have to pay monthly tuition, the uniform, and then competition fees. So getting rid of that uniform price would just take out a big chunks for families, which would be very helpful.
That's what you say, 4,200?
No, that one would be the 6,000.
Yeah, uniform 6,000, practice gear 1,800, and then scholarships for two athletes is 4,200.
So that would be, they would still pay for their uniform, but their tuition and comp fees would be covered for the full year, which we have, like Caitlin said, a few athletes who are like, we'd love it, but we just can't afford it. And so they've had to leave.
Might as well play hockey.
Right.
We have a couple of hockey brothers. We hear how expensive that is.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Well, thank you. Thank you.
And I had no idea that this was going on in Laramie. Great to be, be expanded a little bit.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 14, present for consideration Albany County Rec Board application for sponsorship for Common Outdoor Ground in the amount of $9,928.2.
Yeah, we, let's be exact.
Not quite that necessary, but.
We added up all of the exact costs of everything, so. Hi, I'm Nicole Foss and I am the Director of Operations and Development for Common Outdoor Ground. That sounds like we have a team that is more than me, but I am the only employee. So we're a pretty small and nimble organization. We call ourselves COG, so if I refer to us as COG, you know who I'm talking about. And we're a community organization providing volunteer support for the sustainability of outdoor spaces in Southeast Wyoming. So what that means is that we partner with mostly land managers to do work on public land, helping to fill some of that capacity that sometimes doesn't exist with various land managers. And we know that outdoor rec is one of the most important sectors of Wyoming's economy, especially as we look forward into the future. It is a sector of Wyoming's economy that is poised to be sustainable and to grow. And it has grown exponentially in the last five years. I don't have the updated numbers after the YORec survey from last year, but since 2020, we have seen a shocking influx of outdoor rec enthusiasts in Wyoming. So we provide that supplemental capacity for land managers, including the U.S. Forest Service, City Parks and Rec, State Parks, Pilot Hill, BLM, and really anybody else who is maintaining public land. So we, last year, worked with around 306 volunteers to complete over 1,800 volunteer hours over the course of about 32 volunteer days. We also had our inaugural year of the Albany County Science School or Outdoor School, which is aimed at filling a gap that was left when the elementary schools in Laramie stopped going to the Teton Science School, which was a big experiential place-based learning part of the curriculum, but was also exorbitantly expensive. And you had to sit in a school bus, fourth graders, to drive to the Tetons. So nobody gets paid enough for that. And we just thought, we've got good natured here. We could do some cool stuff mirror to home. So we did two events, one in the spring and one in the fall with fourth and fifth graders from First Vital and then Spring Creek Elementary. We took them up to the Snowy's. And it was actually the first time that two-thirds of the kids had been to the Snowy's. Like ever. Yeah, so that was pretty cool to be able to see them, see this public land that is so close to their home and gain some of that comfort with outdoor recreation. Just, you know, like knowing what to put in your day pack and, and knowing whether you need a pass or not and where to park and all of these things that maybe families face barriers to figuring out on their own. So we are expanding to another elementary school this spring. We are going to be working with Lynford Elementary and then we will be working with Spring Creek again in the fall. The Elbogen Foundation has generously supported this effort with granted funds. And they are providing support for both materials and for the hiring of an outdoor school coordinator, which will help us expand this program. Our vision for the program is that eventually it will be able to fill that role of Teton Science School, but closer to home. We work with many different partners to make that happen, including UW Science Roadshow, the Wyoming Naturalist, local teaching artists who do nature journaling workshops. We do various responsible recreation education as well, like Leave No Trace, stuff like that. And then I do want to point out in terms of the actual request, it is lower than last year. We received feedback from the Albany County Recreation Board that the accounting expenses that we requested funding for last year were really on the edge of what they felt like was reasonable to fund. Also, there was a concern that funding an accountant is a little bit close to funding an employee, even if they're not employed at our organization. So we heard that and we have decreased our accounting request significantly. I think maybe by about $6,000. So we have revamped our, our request in that way. We are a very small organization and most of our expenses that we request funding for are things like administrative support. The food for volunteers at our events is a huge one because we feed all of our volunteers at each event. It's a great incentive to come out and help steward our public land. And then once they're there, we hope to encourage that, that culture of land stewardship in everybody that we work with because we can't have sustainable public lands unless we all feel some sense of ownership and responsibility for them. We also have things like thank you cards. That makes a big difference in terms of our donors and our volunteers and our partners. We have just various things like our insurance costs are fairly substantial because we do carry liability insurance for all of our volunteers who come out and sometimes do some dangerous activities. We want to make sure that everybody feels comfortable volunteering with us and we want to make sure that the burden placed on land managers is not significant in terms of liability. We've got tools. Our tool inventory is pretty significant, but we maintain them well. And so every year when we ask you for funding for tools, those tools are taken care of and stored safely and they allow us to expand the types of projects that we're able to take on. You may have noticed that the Forest Service, I don't know who was paying attention to the Forest Service, but they're in a bit of disarray at the moment. They're having a rough time. So we are poised to help come in and fill some of that, that need. I know that they just, their trails manager just moved on to another position and they're currently in a hiring freeze, so there's no trails manager for the summer. So we're going to be doing a lot of.
There's no seasonals this year either.
No, there aren't. They have their agreement with Wyoming Conservation Corps, so there will be some capacity. But COG's goal is always really to come in and fill those gaps with volunteers whenever possible. And we have an agreement with the Forest Service that allows us to do that work on their land. I also wanted to mention, we expanded our partnerships with the BLM recently doing a series of cleanups at Roger Canyon, which we will continue this year. And last year we removed over 6,000 pounds of trash from Roger Canyon. Thank you. You're very welcome. Yeah, any questions?
Quick question, do you do any marketing events or that kind of thing at some of the destination Laramie kind of things? The bike races, the marathon, the folks that are already in the mountains? Because I found those folks are very good stewards.
Yeah, absolutely.
And do their part, so.
We would consider doing promotional events. I think as, as we've progressed and grown as a nonprofit, we have done more promotional work. Last year we had a booth at the farmer's market where we provided like some postcards for kids to color. And while they were there, then we could chat with the parents about like, do you recreate on public land? Are you interested in maintaining it? Yeah, but we, we would be open. We have partnered with many of the organizations that put on those events, so.
I was just thinking tourism. They seem to have a list and have a pulse on everything that's coming to Laramie, so.
Yes, we have a good relationship with the Visit Laramie Albany County Tourists Board. We partnered with them to open the Centennial Visitor Center a couple of years ago. So yeah, they've had a turnover in leadership, but the folks over there are always great to work with.
And another time you get people going through a lot, and they're not on public land, but they recreate, is when Laramie River Conservation District does some of their different things. That would be an excellent place to have a table and.
Yeah, we, we have wanted to partner with them. We are hoping to expand also into some more conservation-focused projects. It's a little bit tricky considering the agencies that do those projects usually have field scientists that are assigned to them. And so it's harder for us to know when they're happening and know what skills our volunteers will need. But Laramie River Conservation District is an excellent partner as well.
How long has this been around?
We were funded in 2018 by Erin Boos, who is an employee at the Forest Service. It was part of his project when he did a master's program at UW.
Okay, I didn't know that about her.
Yeah.
He's an amazing guy.
He really is. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Hey, item 15, present for consideration Albany County Rec Board application for sponsorship for Laramie Plain Civic Center in the amount of $35,900, $35,390.32.
Sorry, tongue twister. Right, good morning, everyone. I'm Jessica Brower, I'm the Executive Director of the Laramie Plain Civic Center. You've all seen me before in some capacity. I know you're familiar with our nonprofit organization and its rich history here in Laramie. Historically, I have always come to you, asked for funds, infrastructure upgrades that support both the facility itself and the overall budget of the Civic Center, recognizing that it serves a wide variety of sectors in the community. So this year is no different. The request is for the Griffin Theater, which is, is located within the Civic Center. We're sneaking up on the 100th birthday of that theater. It was built with the 1928 edition of the building. And it currently serves as a gathering space around performing arts, including dance, music, theater, conversations that are had in public forums, many, many ways it serves the community. It's estimated that it serves about 9,500 people annually. So this is, this request covers the final portion of a long-term project, which actually predates my time at the Civic Center, but it is for a PA system upgrade. There has been right around $100,000 worth of upgrades that have already been done because of the nature of the project. Unless you are really looking for it, you probably haven't seen it, but I promise it's there. The previous funds went towards what is called an array, and that is speakers that hang up above the stage and under the balcony. Prior to that, there were speakers that sat on the stage and they did not serve the organization for a variety of ways. The second installment covers the floor package, so that things like PAs and all of the equipment that's required for all of the technology to speak to itself in order to amplify whatever needs to be amplified. So this impacts our budget in that. We oftentimes have to rent this equipment for events in the theater. And so the Civic Center owning its own equipment allows us to eliminate that cost from our budget moving forward. Additionally, in trying to acquire certain kinds of performers to, to do their work in the theater, they have what's called writer requirements. And so that has things like the location of the, the equipment, the power of the equipment, that kind of thing. So you may have noticed that we have done more ballet and dance in the theater over the last year. That is because that array, which is now not on the floor, is in the ceiling. It opens up square footage that allows people who are dancing to, to dance and not fall down. I believe that's all I have on this project. I'm happy to answer any questions about the Civic Center holistically and what we're doing and this project.
Jessica, this, this will finish it off.
Yes. Yes.
So this is like the remaining balance. It looks like there's an, I just lost it, $92,000. And this is the remaining balance.
Yes, and this project has been funded by a variety of partners, state partners, local partners, corporate donors, local donors, and then some profits from the theater itself. Yeah, and this would wrap up the project with this little bow.
How many performances do you have in there a year?
That's a great question. I mean, I would say.
I'm sure Adam's probably the right guy to ask.
He is, he is the, he's the man with the most information on all of this. But I would say we have, I mean, right around 200 plus. So we have everything from the performances, like if there's a concert that you come and attend, but there's also, there's church service in there every Sunday. There's recitals in partnership with local dance crews. We've done stuff with the school district. Public meetings, film festivals. So it's kind of a hodgepodge of both public and private events. Sometimes it's 400, 400 parents come into the theater to watch their kids dance. Sometimes it's something that you're going to hear and add on the radio for.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item 16, present for consideration Rec Board application for sponsorship for Albany County Public Library in the amount of $4,735. Hello there.
Good morning, lovely to see you all. It's great to be up here. Yes, this is a relatively small request from us. We don't do rec board consistently. We wait until we have what we feel like is the right project that fits what they need. Or at least that's how we've been doing it in the last few years. Small one, this is just one of the cherries on top of our $2.6 million renovation. So this is just a little bit to do some of those finishing touches that aren't allowed under the larger grant. Because it is a capital funds grant, things like kitchen supplies are not, not added or the signage is, doesn't, didn't fit those grant rules because it connects to the internet. And that was one of the rules of the grant, that nothing that connects to the internet could, could be applied for. So this is for all of the, you, you have a question.
I have a concern actually, but keep going.
Okay.
It's not, nothing to do with this.
Okay, um, so the, um, the not connecting to the internet is getting, was their way of avoiding the very, very specific rules under federal funding about what, about what technology can be purchased when it comes to the internet. So yeah, this fills in, so right, those kitchen things are all just small things, but they add up once you put them all together, for any of us who have, you know, stocked a kitchen. So about half of this is to just buy all of those things that we need, both for our own programming to do in that space. But also our hope is that when that meeting room is finished and the kitchenette, that meeting room is finished, that we will be able to, to make this space far more widely available across the community as a space to be used. It's sort of that, that in-between, I mean, we have lots of great people here where we all have that space available to community. And the Civic Center and the fairgrounds feels like there's still not enough in, in Laramie and that there, there's more we could fill in. And that size of, the size of the rooms that we have will be certainly smaller than what some of the other places have and kind of fill in and get there. So yeah, this is to, so those supplies are not just for our programming use, but also then for the community if they want to use kitchenettes. So whether that's just someone using it. So whether that's um just someone using it for um a party, also no glitter or totally.
That's good.
Yeah.
Uh, it's six hundred dollars for that.
Oh yeah, it's a, it's a regular conversation at the library um with our facilities manager about no glitter. Um, so we'll work through those things. Um, but to be able to make it like, so community groups, whether that's just like a, a baby shower or birthday party or something, somebody who might wanna use that space, um as well as then under the purposes of this grant, working a lot with our nonprofits to do trainings and those sorts of things um through that space. But having that kitchenette and having it stocked just allows that to be um a bit more of a professional space. Um, we already with like the school district, with the sheriff's office, um, they do full day trainings in there. And so we just think the kitchenette and some of these supplies just allow that to feel, yeah, more professional than, than our current space does. The other piece of this is that electronic signage that will sit outside of our three, three rooms. All three of our new spaces will be um reservable, um, a reservable outside of library hours. We intentionally um built that so they could be, that people come in. And so this, these will just be screens that people can actually see what's happening in those rooms or what's coming up on the course of the day. Yeah, happy to answer any questions.
So tell me about the kitchenette. What are you wanting to put, what's this gonna buy for the kitchenette?
Oh, okay, so this, I mean, these are, these are the, um, these are sort of the smaller kitchen supplies. So mixing spoons, serving bowls, serving tongs, um ceramic stuff for, for adults and for adultments, plastic things for, for kid events. Um, it's sort of all of the, the serving utensils, pitchers, um, serving supplies.
Do you have refrigerators? Do you have?
Yeah, so, yeah, so the kitchenette itself will have a refrigerator, um, uh plumbed in professional coffee pot, um microwave. All of those things do fit under the criteria of the grant. So all of that will be purchased under the ground that we're doing. So we'll have the fridge, the dishwasher, the uh pot filler, the coffee pot. All of those bigger items um will be purchased under our big grant. This is just, again, filling in that, those final pieces, tablecloths for the rooms, serving utensils, those sort of smaller things that aren't allowed under the grant.
Chair, I have a quick question.
Go ahead.
Um, Rachel, you have the sponsoring entity with twenty-five thousand dollars. Is that funding you've already requested from the county or is that gonna be in the upcoming one percent?
Um, that is existing. That's our, um, that twenty-five thousand for county is, that one percent was, um, the, um, sorry, my brain just went, it's part of the, it was part of our overall door access and security system. That was the cameras. So in that whole system that we purchased, um, a portion of that goes to the grant. So the grant will pay for door access and um security, and the county will pay for the cameras.
But it can't connect to the internet. That funding can't be used for internet connectivity.
The county portion probably can be.
So the cameras, which is why the cameras is move over.
Now, however.
Okay.
If the.
Yeah, Bailey's got the same question I have.
If a match is required by the funding, which I don't think it was.
It wasn't.
Okay, then you're okay. Future reference, if a match is required by the funding, it has the same rules as that, on that match as it does the, the um grant portion. But because it wasn't, there's the loophole.
Yeah, it wasn't required.
And if we don't have to record it to your other grant that we're talking about.
Right.
Big one, then it is fine, Commissioner Hoff.
Yeah, when we said, and when we submitted it, what they wanted to see were because, interestingly, in the way that this grant was written, there were key components of the grant, so the cameras not so much, but some people would have been buying, um, say, computers and things that were essential to the programming of the grant, but not, um.
Construction portion of it.
Right, and so they wanted, when we submitted the grant, they wanted to see that we had in place the plans and the funding to complete the programming piece of this, even if it wasn't as a part of the capital construction. Because that grant then will require five year, it requires five years of programming and five years of reporting past the date of construction.
That's all, yeah.
Any other questions?
Yeah, ouch, on the recording. My sympathies. On the recording of the grants, five years is a lot of reports.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We're slightly saved because the state hired um consultants. So they're, they are collecting the data from us, and then they actually have to put it in the federal system. So we get saved this bunch, um, but just this much.
Okay, any other questions? Item seventeen, present for consideration Albany County Rec Board application for sponsorship for Special Olympics Wyoming, uh Wyoming Laramie Stampede in the amount of nine thousand dollars to support the ongoing costs of training and competitions. Bailey? Oh, not Bailey, I apologize.
I'm here. Um, my name's Chris Hammond. Um, I'm not the director of Laramie Area Special Olympics, Crystal Gonzalez. And one of our athletes, actually, right now we're in Washington DC talking to John Barrasso about this same topic, which is really cool. It's right, exactly today. So I am, I am on the, um, what do you call it, the management team here in Laramie. There is a select group of us, so a little history about Wyoming Special Olympics or Special Olympics in general. It is a, um, organization started by the Schwebers and Arnold Schwarzenegger with the intention of creating Olympic sports opportunities for people with special intellectual disabilities. Should we think of people, obviously, people with Down syndrome, people with autism, people with things like that. I do have a daughter on the team, she has Down syndrome. Um, Wyoming Special Olympics is our overseer. So every Wyoming Special Olympics um runs the organization, and every team under, under Wyoming Special Olympics is its own entity. So we are Laramie, Team Laramie, Wyoming Special Olympics, Team Laramie. The athletes pick the names that stampede. Um, we operate, well, get back to it, we, we have, we're year-round. We offer year-round athletics. So in the fall, we offer soccer and bowling. The winter, right now, we're, we're, the athletes are training for um snowshoeing and Nordic skiing, which we use the Medicine Bow Nordic Association trails, so thank you very much for considering those. Um, we are in the summer, in the spring, we offer um swimming, basketball, weightlifting, what you would know as track and field and what as, what Special Olympics calls athletics. Everything is modified for the athletics, athlete's ability. So there's everything from normal rules, we try to keep things normalized. So everything from normal swim rules to um very specialized swim rules if athletes can't perform on those. Most of our athletes also have some form of physical disability, which is just the nature of the game. So right now, we operate on a budget of about thirty thousand dollars a year in Laramie. That's for our Laramie budget. In Laramie, we host, um, right now on our roster, there's a hundred and fifty-five athletes. Anybody, that doesn't mean it can't grow, that doesn't mean it's, it's stagnant. Anybody with a, with an intellectual disability is encouraged to participate. Um, we, we clean from everywhere, their ages, preschool to, one of our athletes right now is seventy-five years old. There is no cap in that, in the, there's no, there's no upwardly cap, which is, which is really cool. Um, it is our goal in Laramie, not only to participate in sports, but to create a social environment for our special people, to create a healthy environment for our special people, to keep our special people moving and keep them healthy. So we also offer um things like nutrition courses, which we incorporate in our practices. Um, when we get to state meets and what other meets, we have vision screenings and health screenings and dental screenings, and they're all free for our athletes. Um, and then in the bylaws of Special Olympics, it states that we cannot charge an athlete to be on the team. So this, this is a free um event or a free team for athletes to be on. That said, um, we operate under a budget of about thirty thousand dollars here in Laramie, Wyoming for that year. Um, this includes things like equipment, specialized equipment. Do we have ramps for bowlers and wheelchairs? That sounds silly, but they put the ball on the ramp and send it down the thing. Right now, we could incorporate one more athlete for snowshoeing and special and Nordic skiing, but we don't have a sit ski. A sit ski is about a thousand dollars just for that one athlete. Um, we can incorporate some more adaptive equipments in track and field. We can incorporate um some swim fins and some things that we need for swimming. So that's part of, we have to purchase that ourselves. Uh, Wyoming or Wyoming Special Olympics does, or the community, they'll be very involved. Um, we still have to pay for our venue practice areas. We still have to pay the bowling alley a thousand dollars a year to bowl and practice at the bowling, our, our one bowling alley. We still pay the rec center, rec fees for our athletes. Our athletes all have to have a membership to be in that, that pool so that we can have lifeguarded um practices. If we practice at the high school, we have to pay a lifeguard thirty dollars an hour. And there's a set number, so I'd have to have one or two lifeguards depending on how many swimmers we have. So we do have these inferred costs. Um, on top of that, we'd like to purchase some uniforms, um, especially for soccer teams and basketball teams. Um, and we need some weightlifting belts and some equipment, some specialized equipment for our weightlifters right now. Um, so this is the reason for our request for nine thousand dollars. I know it's a small request from all these other people I've been sitting around here talking about. Um, but it is important, and it's important to me, is my family. Like I said, I have a daughter with Down syndrome who's, who has participated in Special Olympics since she's eight, she's now twenty-four. Um, it's a highlight of her year. She loves to be with this team, she loves to be with the community. Um, um, I don't know how else to explain Special Olympics. It's a wonderful organization, um, and I believe it does keep our special people just that much healthier with, within the community. Any questions, comments, concerns?
Storage for the equipment, do you guys have storage space for that?
We do have storage space for the equipment. Crystal Gonzalez herself lives out of town and she has a huge barn. So most of our equipment is stored properly, nicely, um, and it's stored with Crystal. Um, the Laramie Middle, so I, I leave many hats, but the Laramie Middle School has, in their storage shed by the football field, has one, one area dedicated, dedicated for Special Olympic equipment as well, for snowshoes and for some basketballs and some things that they also use for their adaptive programs, but then we share back and forth.
Thank you.
Um, does the Special Olympics still do for a fundraiser, the polar plunge?
Yes, so that's part of our funding, and so that's why the thirty thousand dollars is, so the state of Wyoming, that's their big fundraiser is the polar, whatever, the jack loop jump, thank you. I forgot. Um, we will host one here in March, end of March, first of April. And um seventy-five percent of the funds earned in that jump will stay with our team. So that varies, you know, so, but then the state does take a, a little hit for, for keeping the state organized too. We actually also pay, when our athletes go to, say, state in Gillette in spring, we have to pay for accommodations, obviously, we have to pay for motel rooms. But we also pay an entry fee to the state, which I don't know how it works, because I'm not an accountant, but we have to pay for our athletes to actually compete, which is fifty dollars an athlete to compete while we're there. And I think that that covers their venue rentals and things like that, but so there's an incurred cost there. And then, you know, uh, we cannot charge, by the bylaws of Special Olympics, we cannot charge our athletes, which is, most of our athletes don't have jobs anyway. Um, the community is very giving. We also do, um, uh, uh, whole court fundraiser. We just did our first one this year and we made over three thousand dollars with that. So that's helping um fund our athletes. But we are sending a continued T to Jackson here at the end of February to compete in the state. And what, from the state, what their hopes are, that they would be, that they would be picked to go on to regionals and nationals. And that does happen sometimes, but mostly it's just for the joy of competing and the joy of staying healthy and the joy of staying moving.
I don't have any questions, it sounds like it's geared for their success, so.
It is really, we, we try to keep it geared for their success. And like I said, I know that you have my phone number, it's on the, in here, but Crystal Gonzalez, I say, is the director. She can answer any of your questions. But for me, it's close to home, because like I said, it's, it's, my family does it, but it's also, it's an amazing event, so.
Chris, thanks for the work you do.
Thank you.
Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And that brings us to the end of the list.
That brings us to the end of the list, and um we want to take a little break.
Yeah.
And work on that, and so what do we want to do? Ten, fifteen minutes and then we're back if we get it done quick.
Yeah.
Okay.
Ten forty-five, ten fifty, what do you think?
Eleven forty-five?
Sorry, eleven.
Uh, eleven forty-five gives us ten minutes.
Awesome.
I'm in.
Yeah.
Cause one, you show him.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just a quick heads up to the board. As you guys do come back for business, um, I did mute you during your breaks. You'll need to unmute yourselves, please.
There we go. Get back to the main screen. There we go.
All right.
So Pete, for your seventh. You had fairgrounds.
Um, I had, uh, my seventh list, I had the Laramie Trap Club on seven. Laramie Rifle Range on six. Um, Terry had them reversed.
Okay.
What about the other age? You had the Trap Club above Rifle Range.
Then eighth would be?
Uh, library, the ninth, Fairboard, and then ten, the Wild Elite Store.
Well, I de- I definitely think that um uh, the the Fairboard needs to go up because we need to make the repairs.
Well, I agree. The repairs need to be made. I don't know.
You don't ask, you don't get.
That's true.
And I struggle with the library wanting that much money to, to do their kitchenette things. Um, they're going to get stolen and, and, and the, like, the Fairboard has a big kitchen. They don't provide all that stuff. And people need to bring their own things so that the uh libraries not having to re-supply and buy new things all the time. And to supply tablecloths, I think is just overboard. And um so I'm, I'm not, I'm not really happy with that, that ask because I think um all, all they're going to do is supply the community with um those, whatever it is they have.
So in regards to Pete's, I know I'm just going off Pete's list because I've got it. Um, where would you want to move Fairboard to?
Well.
That's the
Jimmy Six.
Okay. I don't have a problem with. Okay, but um Terry's suggesting moving the fair, or I'm sorry, Commissioner.
That's fine. I, now I answer to a lot of things.
Uh, or Chair, uh, move the Fairboard to the, it would be the sixth position, Commissioner Gosar under, uh, after the Civic Center.
Okay.
Uh, do you have any?
No.
Okay. Uh, I move that, uh, our recommendation show the sport, uh, for the top, uh, as the Special Olympics. Uh, the second as the Medicine Bow Nordic Association. Uh, the third being Common Outdoor Ground, fourth being Pilot Hill. Uh, the fifth being the Civic Center, um.
The fourth.
Yeah, the Griffin Theater Audio. I'm sorry, I'm jogging between two different sheets right now. Um, the uh sixth being the Fairgrounds. Uh, improvements. Uh, the seventh would be Laramie Rifle Range Request. Uh, next would be the uh Laramie Trap Club. And then the ninth would be the library, the public library, uh, request for their hardware. And then, uh, I believe the last would be Y O L D S term, um, with the amendment that the the amount request be um within five hundred dollars of twelve thousand.
Second. Thank you for doing that.
Thank you. Um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion best.
Thank you all.
Thank you very much.
And I got to learn something about COG today. I was, I was curious after reading through it.
You can visit our website, sign up for our email list and volunteer with us this summer.
I know a lot of the people that volunteer absolutely love it.
Oh, yeah. We have a passionate base of volunteers and we love them too.
Thank you.
I will.
That's good. I'll volunteer.
Amazing.
Item nineteen, present for approval agreement between the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Albany, Wyoming by and through Albany County Grants Office and the Albany County Public Library Board of Directors for Grant Services, Bailey.
Okay, now that we're done with the record, on to the other stuff. Let's see, um. How do I start this? Uh, library has recently accepted federal funding to do their major renovation to the facility. Um, because it is federal funding, um, Tracy asked our auditors if it needs to go on our CFO, which is the scheduled expenditure federal, it's our federal. It's our federal audit that I have to report on. The auditor said yes, they do. With this information, um, we've met with the library, we've talked with the fairgrounds. We feel that it's in the best interest of the county and even the library and the fairgrounds that any federal or state dollars um that the library and the fairgrounds wish to apply for goes through the grants office for the county. Um, this would help out the library and the fairgrounds both, um, helping with their grants with the management because they can be complicated. Like we just heard earlier, the reporting for the library one, sounds like it's not the easiest thing in the world. And it's got a long life to it. Um, and then it would assure us that the funds are being managed appropriately. Um, giving correct numbers on our CFO. So, questions?
Just going to spread your tooth in.
That's a quick forceful one.
It was awfully quick there.
It will not. Um, because each, it's, uh, this is my sixth year here. Um, the entire time I've been here, they don't apply for too many grants. Of course, we'd like to help them increase that. Um, this multimillion dollar grant for the library is something different. Um, we're going to get caught up on this one. Um, Rachel created a driver. She dropped everything in there for me and so I haven't had a chance to look at it yet. Um, but we're going to be working on that with them. One of the other pieces too is the rec board funding, which you just saw. We will not have it, we will not help them with that because the county is the sponsoring entity on that, so that they do on their own. And of course, one percent funding too. So any local funding, that's on their own. We're just going to help with the state and the federal funding.
Taylor?
I just wanted to point out that, um, when I talked to Bailey about this originally and I made my board aware, I sent them, um, the copy that Bailey had sent me. This is how the fairgrounds is operated with grants, um, prior. So there's nothing that's changed. There's no additional job duties on either of us. Um, this is, when I talk to Bailey about grants or other opportunities, I work with her on those that she presents to me. I work on my local stuff. I ask her questions, but this isn't changing how we operate at all on the fairground side of things.
This is just formal agreement.
Yeah, it's, it's just like office keeping, keeping the fairgrounds consistent kind of thing.
And the original agreement that was drawn up by Jennifer, um, the library had some questions about, we met Monday um, in regards to it and straightened all that out. And Rachel, correct me, the, you guys are good with the healthy agreements.
Yeah, we ended up, um, they haven't formally approved it, but yes, we are good.
Okay. So we just had a few corrections to make and everything. And Commissioner Gosar was at that meeting as well.
I moved to, we approve the agreement to the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Albany, Wyoming by and through the Albany County Grants Office and the Albany County Public Library Board of Directors for Grant Services. I'll reluctantly sign it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Item twenty, present for approval agreement between the Board of Commissioners of the County of Albany, Wyoming by and through the Albany County Grants Office and trustees of the Albany County Fairboard for Grant Services.
It's the same thing, just with the fairgrounds.
I moved to approve the agreement between the Board of Commissioners of the County of Albany, Wyoming by and through the Albany County Grants Office and the trustees of the Albany County Fairboard for Grant Services.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Item twenty-one, present for approval, funding agreement between the Board of Commissioners of the Albany County, Wyoming and Hospice of Laramie and Volunteers of America for the year twenty twenty, or twenty twenty-five, um, community partner one percent funding.
This one does need to include that, uh, the Laramie Railroad.
Oh, yes, and Laramie Railroad Depot Association.
Um, these are the final three agreements that were out there for the one percent funding. Um, this will wrap that up and applications are already open for next year.
Motion.
I moved to approve the funding agreement to the Board of Commissioners of the County of Albany, Wyoming and Hospice of Laramie, Volunteers of America, and the Laramie Railroad Depot for the fiscal twenty-five community partner one percent funding. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Ratify three-year continuing application for Department of Health and Human Services, Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration grants to expand substance abuse treatment cap- capacity in adult treatment drug courts and adult healing to wellness courts in the amount of three hundred and forty thousand, seven hundred and eighty-five dollars to continue to support the expansion of Albany County Supervised Treatment Program from September thirtieth, twenty twenty-five to September twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-six. Hello.
Hello. I'm Chair. Um, Commissioners, uh, this is to ratify our year three for our CMCA grant, um, substance abuse, mental health uh, grant that we have for our adult program. Um, we have currently in our second year. Um, this is our second round of having this grant. Um, it's a five-year grant. And so, um, we are moving forward with the continuation for it. We've had a good year.
Um, I just have a
Please.
question. So how, how many people are served by this much money?
Um, up to forty individual participants per year. Um, but this year, next year, the third year, we will increase up to forty-two participants. Um, and our participants do range from um misdemeanor offenses that could have anywhere from six months suspended incarceration, uh, to felon, um, felony underlying charges. Uh, one of our participants right now has an underlying of eight to ten years in prison. Um, so it's a whole range. Uh, we also provide services for um individuals that struggle with alcohol, um, any controlled substance. Um, but half of our population with this grant, um, we do focus on uh opioid and stimulant abuse.
And then what's the success rate?
Um, our success rate, I was just looking at numbers too. We're pretty good. We have a higher, um, the success rate than just like Department of Corrections without the extra treatment support. I don't have the exact number, but I know that we're about sixty-five, seventy percent success rate.
Great, thank you.
You're very welcome.
I moved to ratify the three-year continuing application. I uh, moved to we ratified the three-year continuing application for the Department of Health and Human Services Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration Grant to expand substance. Uh, substance abuse treatment capacity in adult treatment drug courts and adult eating wellness as presented.
Thank you.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye, motion carries, thank you Heather. Item twenty-three, present for approval, travel repayment agreement between the Board of Commissioners of the County of Albany, Wyoming by and through the Albany County Court Supervised. Treatment Program and various community partners for the RISE twenty-five conference.
Thank you, um, so last year was the first year we did this, um, and it was pretty successful, we did have somebody back out. Our repayment agreements are for um, individuals or agencies that we contract with for both our adult and our juvenile program. Um, if they had to cancel going to the conference for any reason, then their agency would be responsible for paying the county back for those funds. Historically, we've had some struggles with that and it's a lot of money that's invested for fifteen, sixteen people to go. Um, and so uh, we have been able to get, we sent out repayment agreements to um, foundations counseling, Bennett Law, Foreman Law. And Sheriff's Department, um, and I just sent the last one back this morning, signed, so um, all of the agencies have signed it and putting it in front of Commissioners for approval. Um, and it would just be for that reimbursement, if they had to cancel for any reason, they would cover the costs.
Would you please uh, give me some information on the RISE twenty-five?
Absolutely, um, so National Drug Courts, um, it used to be called National Drug Association, they just recently changed it to all RISE. But it is uh, the parent organization for all the court supervised treatment programs. Um, and so bill drug courts, juvenile drug courts, veterans courts, DUI courts, it's a national conference that a lot of the programs try to go to. Um, not, I guess, the time or place, but you guys know, I told um, Commissioner Jones yesterday. Uh, they, I have been asked to be on a panel for our juvenile program at the national conference this year. Uh, for one of our juvenile uh, early intervention programs and so it's a pretty big deal for juvenile or for drug.
I was just curious, I, I saw Kissimmee, St. or St. Cloud, Florida.
Oh yes.
Oh yeah.
Uh, they're not unfortunate locations everywhere.
Oh. No, I uh, moved, we approved the travel repayment agreement between the Board of County Commissioners of Albany County, uh, Wyoming. By and through the county board supervised treatment program, various community partners for the RISE twenty-five conference. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries, thank you Heather. Item twenty-four, present for discussion, solar projects for Albany County Courthouse and the five oh one East Iverson Building. Bailey.
Good morning, Commissioner. See, um, so back in December, um, it was approved for the courthouse and IT building to um, get solar panels. Um, with the understanding that the federal funding are still there. With the executive orders that are. For being at the federal level, um, I've had Jennifer look into this, I've even talked to Leo about this. This is a discussion item, that's all this is, I just want you to be aware what's going on.
Cool.
So um, Jennifer isn't here, as you can see, um, but I'm just gonna read real quick what she. Um, told me to. Uh, and looking at this information from Leo and doing some other research over the past week, she has a few thoughts. She needs to do some more research before she makes a final deci- before anybody makes a final decision. The IRA Inflation Reduction Act is a law that was passed and Trump can't, can't get rid of the executive order, but it doesn't change the law. Related to the first point and based on the links Leo sent, it looks like the credits are valid for at least twenty twenty-five. If that's the case, we should be fine to move forward with the projects. The next few items are items to move forward with this project, um, because there's multiple pieces to these federal credits. Um, but I, I do just want to bring this, I did want to bring this forward to know, to let you guys know what's going on, but this should just be on the radar. Any questions?
It's on everybody's radar. From healthcare to infrastructure, um, well, that's the, the livability of the entitlement clause. So I guess my question is, this is a reimbursement.
So.
The county pays the bill for the solar and then if the credits are still available?
To my understanding, yes, the, the county has to upfront the funds, then there's a credit that comes back, um. Which Tracy's gonna have to help me on because this goes through tax stuff, Albany County's tax exempt, which is the next item on the agenda. Um, so, um, it's a whole process, the first part of this process from what I've understanding, Commissioner Gozar sent me the link. Um, this low income piece, which is the next few items, um. Albany County actually does qualify for this low income piece, we, we hit that criteria that they want, um, but you have to put an application for this. You put in the initial application, then um, we have permission to move forward on the project, then once the project's complete and in service. But I have to have an engineer verified in service, then I put that piece into the portal, so that's just the low income piece. Then we have the directive pay piece, which Tracy and I have um, set up the portal for that, which is another application type piece. We do not get any funding until all this is working, um, I don't know any about, about any reporting, haven't found any of that information. Multi-step process.
You're saying a lot of I don't know about this and that, a lot of money, a lot of.
Yeah, because I, I've called Leo multiple times asking about the information, he's helping us walk through all this piece of it. The only reason I feel confident we're gonna get funding back, as long as it's there, is because of Leo and Creative Energies, because he's helping us, this is. A whole different world to me, this is not grants, this is tax pieces and I wish Tracy was here because she'd know a different side of things. But this isn't necessarily a grant and it's going through my office anyways.
So I do have a little bit of background in, in this world, in many of those, um, so step back to uh. Solar arrays, um, were usually given thirty percent credits, tax credits, if you were a nonprofit. That meant nothing to you, you didn't pay any taxes, so the credits met up and, um, the Inflation Reduction Act. Said, well, we still want nonprofits to be able to uh, take part in this uh, in the funding. Uh, so in lieu of tax credits, you can apply for a direct payment. Um, so instead of thirty percent tax credits you wouldn't use, you'll get thirty percent uh, refunded to you uh, lieu of uh, the tax credits. That ten percent will add to that thirty percent, um, if approved, uh, so you'll get solar arrays for forty percent less uh. Than uh, if you were to buy them off the street, um, and install them. Um, and it also goes not just to the solar panels, but it's my understanding, having been on a couple of webinars, that it also is the installation costs associated with those solar panels. Uh, so the entire project will come back forty percent.
Forty percent less than say list price?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
Will that list, or will that forty percent ever pay for the? The panels and the energy recapture in the warranty period?
So.
I, I know they're warning for, and I know Jake did the numbers.
On the, on the IT building, I think the return on investment was seventy grand, maybe a little bit more.
I, I think you're right, if I'm staring at the right thing, it repays for itself even without the credits in fourteen years?
I believe so.
But it does repay for itself.
On the IT.
On the IT building, it was my understanding the courthouse will never pay for itself and if it's iffy numbers.
That is what.
Okay, it, I, I saw it over the course of twenty years and the warranty of the product that it was not going to. Ever recapture, even with the credit, is that correct?
That's it, uh, but you have to make some assumptions, right, uh? So.
Why, yes, I, yeah.
The, the cost of electricity is the major assumption that you make, um, and then we have entered into contracts, um, with creative energies and so. You know, um.
Yeah, barring how that contract was entered, I'm just trying to get down to the science and the math.
Yeah, 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 I, I'll tell you, uh, that I've had uh, solar panels on a roof since two thousand and eight.
I know, you're in their flyer.
Yeah, well, um, I don't believe that was, they, there was, maybe it was them, um, in two thousand and eight, um, the payback period was thirty-seven years, I remember.
And as the cost of electricity goes up.
That has steadily gone down from thirty-seven years to fourteen or seventeen years and we are sixteen years later, so. Uh, for every year that I've had solar panels, it's come down two years, um, for the cost of repayment.
And I'm all for it, as long as it's gonna pay for itself. Okay.
So, like I said, this was just a discussion item, I wanted you guys to know what's going on, Jennifer and I are watching it just like we're watching all the other federal funding at this point, but this is just where we're at with this, so you're all aware.
Okay, item twenty-five, present for approval. Test station for clean electricity low-income communities bonus credit amount program.
So with this low income piece, um, which is that additional ten percent, um, on top of that thirty, like Commissioner Gozar was talking about the forty. One of the things they have to make sure, it's all these categories you have to pick on what entity you are, well, of course, we're government, we're tax exempt. We need an attestation letter, um, from the Commissioners just saying that, that we are tax exempt in the language that they want to see, Jennifer wrote it up, so. That's it.
So we just need to go forward with that.
Yeah.
I moved to approve the uh, attestation letter for the clean electricity low-income community bonus credit amount program. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Item twenty-six, present for approval application for clean electricity low-income communities. Bonus credit amount program for the Albany County Courthouse.
So I'm with, then the low income piece, we're, because they're two different buildings, we're submitting two separate applications for this piece. This is just the courthouse piece, the next one's the IT building piece. The application itself is very simple, like I said, then we do need, once it's in service, we need a few other things, I've already let Leo know what we need, um, so he's well aware of that, um, and. Jake's well aware of it too, um, and they'll get us what we need to then move forward, that yes, this, once that piece is in. Then, yes, it's moving forward or it's working how it should, things like that, this is just the first piece to get our name. Into the list and it's due by Valentine's Day.
I've moved to approve the application for the clean electricity low-income community bonus credit amount program for the Albany County Courthouse. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Item twenty-seven, present for approval application for clean energy low-income communities. Bonus credit amount program for five oh one East Iverson, Bailey.
Uh, same thing, it's just the same application, just for um, the IT building.
See, this one will paper itself, I moved that we approve the application for the clean energy. Low-income community bonus credit programs for five oh one East Iverson. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Item twenty-eight, present for approval, the amendments to the employee handbook, Bailey.
So when we, uh, the employee handbook was redone or modified back in July, uh, there was an item that we removed that one of our grants. Um, requires that be in there, um, and um, and then there's another item they wanted us to add. Um, so threatening and violent behavior, section thirty-nine. Um, we added one piece, I'll just read the um, modified sentence for you. Threatening elected officials, department heads, employees, persons engaged business with Albany County or members of the public. Or engaging in threatening or violent behavior in the workplace is prohibited. Is cause for disciplinary action or criminal prosecution if done by an elected official, department head or employee. Such behavior includes but is not limited to intimidation, threats, physical assault, use of firearms and weapons, or property damage. The other piece that we added was in section sixty-six for formal performance review, we just added the sentence. At the very end, evaluations are not tied to an employee's compensation. Those are the only two minor items we needed to add.
These need to go out for public comment.
It's already been out, okay.
I thought you guys discussed this this fall.
So, um, we did briefly, we did briefly, then it went out for public comment and then that was today, so then you guys would officially approve it today, hopefully.
I moved to approve the amendments to the employee handbook as presented. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Item twenty-nine, present for approval, de-obligation modification for the. Twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three sub-recipient funding agreement from the Office of Justice and Delinquency Prevention and University of Wyoming. Wyoming Survey and Analysis Center in the amount of fifty thousand dollars for funding cycle. Of January first, twenty twenty-five through September thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. Bailey.
So this agreement you guys actually did approve, I believe, your first meeting of January, um, they came back and told me, no, they had some wrong information on there, so they're de-obligating the funds, they assure me a new agreement will be coming shortly. But they want to de-obligate instead of just amend.
I moved that we approve the de-obligation as presented. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Item thirty, present for consideration, the Taylor conditional use application, CU dash zero one dash twenty-four.
Yeah, I'm the chair, Commissioners. Um, the applicants are David and Susan Taylor, owner of Properties Valley Investments LLC. This is a property at twenty-seven sixty-eight Highway one thirty in Centennial, it's the Bear Bottom Inn, or I think I was supposed to call it Bear Bottom Inn. Um, what the request is, is this, this um, property is owned commercial and they're requesting to cite a. Uh, residence on the property in the back, it's already on the property, but they need to get a conditional use for this according to our zoning resolution. Um, we sent this out to, for review, the, the one review that, that was discussed mostly at the Planning and Zoning Commission was from Harmony Hendricks, who's the board chair. Of the Centennial Water and Sewer District Board, they mentioned that the water and sewer was connected on the property without their knowledge. Um, and, but she also goes on to state that it's not within our purview to suggest the action, if any, you should take regarding the conditional use application, so they pointed out some. Um, deficiencies of, of the property owner, but also said that they don't really care about official use. Um. So just a quick analysis of this, this property, I mean, obviously, this is an area where there's a mix of residential and, and commercial uses. Um, the addition of the building will, or the additional building is connected to the water sewer district. Um, so it's not gonna be any septic or well or anything, um. If, if they do have signs or lighting and the standards of the county. Um, the planning department overall supports this application, um, finds that the proposed use meets the standards of the conditional use application. Uh, Planning Zoning Commission did discuss this, as I, as I mentioned, they discussed the uh, Centennial Water and Sewer District Board's. Letter and they, they discussed whether to add a um, condition or not. Deputy County Attorney Matt Ayers explained that the, the board's comments are not something that the conditional use standards specifically address and advise the, the, them that the conditions. To the application should only be made on findings that are specifically addressed in the regulations. Um, so the Planning Zoning Commission made a recommendation, they recommended to approve, um, this application. With a condition that the applicant satisfactorily resolve the dispute with the Centennial Water and Sewer District Board. Um, and if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
So just a little background that I don't know if you were here with us, um, we vacated uh, the northern part of First Street in Centennial. Before that vacation was officially done, the Taylors poured concrete.
Ah, yes, okay.
Um, put on a um, modular, as I've been told, maybe even established. Um, put on a, um, modular, as I've been told, maybe even established electricity. Um, so. So then, uh, the previous commission said, well, I guess we'll just not do that then, um, unless the Taylors want to come talk to us, so the Taylors came to talk to us. Um, and, um. Said, well, we'll certainly follow all rules as we go forward. Um. I was particularly, um, not impressed with that approach to, to building and asking forgiveness. I am incredibly unimpressed with this second building and asking forgiveness. There's no way I will support this. Um, uh, he was asked point blank. Um, please follow all the rules that, that requires to get this done. Obviously could not talk to Centennial Water and Sewer District, even though should know to have done that. Um, so I'm.
So he took it upon himself to connect, from what it sounds like, connect to the water and sewer. Um, and the Centennial Water and Sewer has no concerns that it was done correctly, or that's. Or were they tapping into an existing line and just creating another leg?
Well, they, they do, um, it was an existing line from what I was, from what I understand from the Taylors, there's an existing line there. That goes to the restaurant, they tapped into that and, and that feeds the building. Um, the problem is, is in their rules, um, any. Work on, you know, those lines, they're supposed to be overs- oversaw by the district. Um, and that's what they didn't, they didn't do. Um, in the letter, it also expresses that, that, you know. They're disappointed with, with this and it, but they will figure it out, so I don't know what that really means, but yeah.
Well, and it looks like the Taylor's contention, as they wrote on the application, that there's been a residential property there for. Almost a hundred years and that the permit shouldn't need been required.
Yeah, and I'm not sure where the residential property or residences or where that was, because it doesn't exist there now.
Yeah.
And the vacation, they have built on the vacation that was granted by the county commission, so even if there was a hundred-year-old property, it was in somebody else's.
This is a new structure that's been built.
Yes.
Yeah.
It, it, yeah, it wasn't, it was, I think it's a modular that they put on there, but yeah, it's within that, that area.
So the county has vacated First Street?
Yeah, a portion.
Yeah, a portion. A, a portion, okay.
And I don't believe they have paid the Centennial Water and Sewer District for their hookup since May or June. Uh, it's my understanding, if I read the correspondence in the packet correctly.
Yeah, the actual hookups, I don't think there's any been, from, from last I'd heard, that had been paid.
Okay. Welcome to Centennial.
I know, I know. Place this and not. Knowing that you're being recorded, um. I guess my concern comes in if they're. If this is occurring while they're adding on to the property, what other things are going to occur and. Then if the property comes up for sale, what recourse do the new owners have without a full inspection or buyer beware?
They better have a buyer beware.
Right, and, and the Taylors are not the property owners, just to be clear. Valley Investment is the property owners, and that's not the Taylors.
That's not the Taylors.
That I think, I believe they must be leasing the property.
They lease the, the restaurant and the bar.
Yeah.
Okay.
And I don't know if that's like a lease to own or contract for deed, but I know just doing the liquor license, so they.
So, okay, so I have a question. So we deny this. They just keep on doing what they're doing?
Well, if they deny this, then we begin the enforcement process, which would include. Our office contacting the proper leasies and the property owner. Um, that they'll need to, to remove that building. Um, and then it moves through the process, and if they do that, then everything is good, if they don't, then. Um, other actions will be taken.
I don't wanna go down the road of having to remove the property, um, but I, I want safeguards in place that. Especially since they're tapping into publicly consumed water. If that's done incorrectly or half-assed or whatever, then that causes major concerns, and I, I don't care what they do on their property, but now they're affecting. Potentially their neighbors and, um, a, a, a lot of lives that are outside their span of control. Um, I. I, I don't wanna tell people what to do on their property, but they're, I, they're leasing it, it sounds like. I know, it sounds like they, they might be taking advantage of a situation and, uh. Um, I don't know if it's for the sake of being cheap or cost effectiveness, or if it's the Centennial way. I don't wanna say it that way. Um. But, uh. Yeah, I, I have to agree with Commissioner Gosar that this is kind of borderline fraudulent. Um, even if it's a civil issue, I, I realize there's no criminal action. Um, that your office can take at this moment.
Right.
But, um.
It would be wonderful if the owners and the Taylors would come and talk to this board, um, and explain. How we got to where we got. Um, I'm fine with tabling this.
Yeah.
Until the next meeting.
Yeah.
And I would love to hear the conversation. Um. I think by just approving it, you have a moral hazard, so that the next person goes, well. You just put something on the ground and then eventually you get it done. Um, I'd like there to be an explanation of how this happened, so that we can not do this again.
And, and what is the path forward?
Yeah, I, I don't want this to set a precedent that all the commissioners are just gonna greenlight everything that's already built. In lieu of paperwork and proper process. So, uh, I, I move that, uh, let me get this right. Uh, that we table, uh, the Taylor conditional use application, CU zero one dash twenty-four, um, to the. Eighteenth. Uh, February eighteenth meeting, um, to allow, uh, time for applicants to address. Um. Additional concerns.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries, that this will be tabled until February eighteenth meeting. And please ask them to come.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, they, they were invited at this meeting, so.
Well, we suggest they show up at the next meeting.
Well, and I've had conversations with the Centennial Water and Sewer, um, or at least one of their maintainers this summer at Fair. Um, and he had some concerns that, like, obviously didn't make it into the paperwork, so.
Okay. Item thirty-one, present for consideration, the updated. Albany County Land Use Regulations Enforcement Procedures that will replace all. Land use enforcement procedures previously adopted. David.
Yeah, Madam Chair, um, commissioners. This item, we published these, um, previously, um. And what it, what these are, basically these are our eternal, internal procedures for enforcement. Um, it outlines, um, how we accept, um, complaints. Um, what we collect, um, for information. And then how we, we basically pass this on to the county attorney's office, and then what the county attorney's office will do. So, um, we've had adopted, um, enforcement procedures since two thousand nine. In two thousand sixteen, they were rewritten, um, and then the county attorney's office has taken the opportunity to rewrite them again. Where a lot of, or more, I think, cases have been, been. Um. Not resolved, um, through our informal processes. Um, so they move on to the county attorney's office, so I think there's three or four going on right now that they have. Um, one of the things that, that we've discovered is, is we needed, needed to, um, collect more information. Um, different information and just have better record keeping, so that once the planning office gets all that, we can turn it over to the. The, um. Attorney's office for them, and, and hopefully they have everything that they need. Obviously, there'll be other things they'll probably ask us for and those types of things, but really, it's just to, um. The update is just to clean things up, um, make sure that, that we're collecting what we need to, and we have a good. Good flow of, of information from our office to the, the county attorney's office. Um, the one thing that I will note, um. In this document is, there, there are a couple of things that will need to be changed, um, just like typos. Um. Really, they're just typos, they're just change a, a couple of things, so I think on chap, or on page two. Um, there's a last bullet, bullet there, it says imitate, and it's supposed to be initiate. Um, unless we get like the sheriff's office involved, and maybe it's imitate, I don't know. Anyways, um. Intimidate, maybe, I don't know, um. On chapter, or page four. Uh, section four, there's structures, it's just structures, that should be. Um, so that'll be updated, and then. Um. There on chapter, let's see, page. Page six, kind of in the middle of the page, there's a submitted, it should be submitting. So basically, there's, there's three. Um, typos that we need to change, so if, if approved, we just ask you to approve it. Um, with opportunity to change those typos, so. Do you have any questions about this?
Is your office structured for enforcement?
Uh. What do you mean?
Well, I know you have a part-time enforcement guy, do you have enough personnel to even enforce this or keep track of this, or?
Um, so, if, if we can re, rehire our enforcement person and, and have a full-time person. Then, then yes, because most of, most of this is, most of our site is the investig- investigation part of it or whatever. Um, and so what would happen, our enforcement officer, um, gets a complaint, he goes out, takes pictures. Um, reviews the regulations, um, we send a couple of letters out, and then, then it goes to the, to the, um. The county attorney's office for them to do the, the legal part of it, if it gets that far. I mean, our hope is, in our office, is that we work with people to help them to comply with our regulations before it gets to the county attorney's office.
Cause I have some problems with the language too.
Okay.
Um, first of all, so this came out as a memo on the twenty-first. I caught this in the package, packet on Friday, um, if you wouldn't mind, um, from here on out, if it's a memo to the committee. Emailing it to the commissioners.
Uh.
This whole document, so the head of this document actually reads. Um. I'll get to it. It's a memo from your office to the county commissioners. And it's dated January twenty-first. And I'm catching on to it in February.
Well, that's, that's when I wrote the memo, it didn't go out to anybody until when I was.
Until the agenda.
That's not enough time for this to, to review.
Okay.
Um, so my recommendation would be to table it. Um, also on page five, you have entry to property. Agreements there with the, uh. Permit grants, the planning department ingress and egress of the, for the purpose of investigation.
Okay.
And you have a couple of other legal access requests or requirements at that point on here. I'd like to discuss those further before it's formalized document.
Okay. Um, one thing I will note that this went out, it came to the board, um, forty-five days before this meeting. So it has been out, what's that?
Congratulations, there was an election.
Right, right, but, um. I'm just saying it has been in the public, and it's been on our website. Um, but whatever you would like.
Okay.
We can do.
Okay.
And, and by no means do you have to, um, make a decision today. Um, public hearing was, was, um, noticed. And we had the public hearing, so you guys can take as long as you want to look at this and discuss it, so.
Yeah, I move that we table. Uh, the update to the Albany County Use Regulation Enforcement Procedures. Um. As it sits right now.
You wanna do it in February or do you wanna go in March?
Let's go in March, what's the first meeting in March? The fourth?
Yes, in February and March, you said.
Or March fourth.
Dan, are you gonna work with the county attorney?
Yeah, I'm gonna sit down with the county attorney's office and.
Oh, but wait. Is that gonna give time for Matt to get back and?
Oh, is he out on?
Matt's out on.
And Jennifer, I don't know when Jennifer's gonna get back.
Jennifer's back, she gets back the twenty, uh, or twenty-first.
Do you wanna push it to the second meeting in March, just to give you more time?
Be the twenty-fifth?
The eighteenth.
No, it's eighteenth, yeah, um, so move to. Move table this until March eighteenth. Do you need that restated? Okay.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item thirty-two, present for consideration, the intergovernmental agreement between the city of Laramie. And the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Albany for the implementation of the Laramie Growth. Area Plan, David.
Yeah, Madam Chair, commissioners, um, the Board of County Commissioners adopted the Laramie Growth Area Plan on July eighteenth, twenty twenty-three. Um, one of the. Um. Recommendations of the plan is to create an undergovernmental agreement between the city and the county. Um, to determine how things work within this area. Um. Planning Zoning Commission, while not required, received this and provided some. Um, comments on this. Couple of things that they, they commented on were their concerns that this didn't discuss anything about the Casper Aquifer Protection. Um, they also discussed the uncertainty of what happens, um, once a property is annexed. Um, and they also discussed, um, the city's promises to. Uh, provide extraterritorial water and sewer connection. Um. And they, they didn't quite think that the language was sufficient to require. Um, that, that the, um, that the city would provide water and sewer to. Um, the county residents without, and, or, you know, without having to annex or whatever. Um. Just to quickly kind of run through the, the nuts and bolts of this agreement. Um. First, it requires both the city and county to use the Laramie Growth Area Plan as guidance for land use decisions. Um, there's some notification requirements, the county not- notifies the city when. Um, or excuse me, the city notifies the county when annexation, rezoning, or subdivision within the LGA is proposed. Um, they also, um, provide county comments on proposals and applications within the Laramie Growth Area. And then the city will also, will allow extension of services, water, sewer, et cetera, for. Properties not eligible for annexation if the criteria is satisfied. County's responsibilities include notifying the city when zoning district amendments or subdivisions within the Laramie Growth Areas proposed. County will coordinate a, a meeting with applicants and the city planning staff if the proposal is contiguous or adjacent to the city boundaries. Um, provide city comments on proposals and applications within the Laramie Growth Area. County will require right-of-way dedicated to public use for all subdivisions within the LGA. Um, the county will require connection to city services if a subdivision proposal is contiguous or adjacent to city boundaries. So overall, the agreement provides some communication require, requirements, um, outlines some regulatory changes. Uh, the most significant and the most discussed area is the extension of water sewer. Um. And what's required to properties that are adjacent to the city. Um, Planning Zoning Commission's discussed, um. Language in section two or seven point three point two concerning extraterritorial water and sewer. Um, wanting it to provide assurances that the city will provide these connections, agreement notes that the criteria. Um, that extension of water and sewer services will be based on Wyoming statutes, title forty-one. Chapter ten, which outlines the requirements for water and sewer districts. And the Wyoming DQ's Rules and Regulations, chapter twelve, which outlines the standards for the development of public water supply. The concerns that I will point out is that the criteria have been, have not been developed, and there's no provision. That the county will be involved. Also, it seems that the creation of the water and sewer district is necessary for the city to provide water and sewer connections. If this is not a statutory requirement, there may be an alternative, there'll be less owners to a developer. Um, ultimately, your, your options are to approve this. Uh, agreement, amend this agreement, and send it back for further discussions, deny the agreement, or table the agreement. Um, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you have about this.
Did there any discussions between the city, uh, planning and zoning and the county planning and zoning? This seems like a perfect opportunity to have a work session between those two and come up with agreement that everybody doesn't have questions about.
Right, um, no, there was not. Um, the city. Uh, our, our planning and zoning commission obviously reported here, the city commission, they didn't make any changes and they were okay with it. But there wasn't any discussion between the two.
So the county originated this, uh, document, is that, is that?
No, um, so, uh. The city planning office, um, they're the ones that originated the document.
Okay.
Um, there's a number of back and forth, there's meetings between city staff and county staff. Including like their public works and, and some of those folks. Um, county attorney's office on our side, um. Was involved with all of this. So, um, that's kind of where we're at now, where we came from.
Yeah, so the concerns that the county raised, seven point three point two, those have been taken care of or whatever, the, the county planning and zoning that I?
No, those are the things that they, they, um, where this is a contract, the, the planning zoning doesn't really have any authority to enter into contracts. Um, that's your purview. And so those are their, the recommendations and, and some of their comments on those provisions. So they didn't make any changes to what came to them.
So they recommended the staff, I did listen in on that whole meeting. Um, and zoning and planning was very hesitant on this as well, just because there is no guarantee. For any kind of city obligation. It, it is basically a document that provides term fee-ready annexation into the county. With a guarantee that any of that will happen. So if they're promising county residents. Hook up to water or sewer, it is strictly at the discretion of the city. There is no contractual. Or implied obligation from the city. This is a terrible document. For the county to be entering into. This is gonna kill development in the county and it's going to, um, discourage a lot of people from. Even considering building outside city limits at this point.
Close, at all close.
At, at all close, yeah.
Well, with that, I have to tell you where this has come from. Uh, cities like Cheyenne.
Oh, I know.
Yeah, yeah, and, and if you don't plan, then that's what you get. Um, and so it can, this be improved on. Guessing it probably can.
I'm, I'm sure it can be, but.
It's, it's simply a pretty simple, uh, agreement, quite honestly. I mean, I do have some concerns if the city's not bound, maybe we can make that language more binding. Um. But, uh.
The city gives nothing.
Yeah, they do. Yeah, I, I, I would disagree with that. They, they provide, uh, city services, um. Even if they're not gonna annex that, that are right next to the, the city, uh, that's not nothing. Uh, I don't know what the, the. The cost of running sewer and water, um, a mile or so or whatever, uh. Five hundred yards, it's fairly sizable as we are understanding and.
And, but it's, it, yes, it is a sizable incurred cost.
Yep.
But they're still working on building out infrastructure within city limits.
Yeah.
So the concern now for outside city limits, I. Have a hard time supporting this or even coming close to it.
Is there time for public comment?
At nine-thirty this morning.
On the agenda, yes.
But I'd love to hear from the city. You guys not interested in hearing from the city? No, go ahead. Is he from the city?
Yeah. Sorry.
Didn't wanna, uh, mess up the protocol. I apologize. I thought we had public comment per item, but. Philip Gabitouler, Planning Manager for the City of Laramie. Madam Chair Commissioners, I'm here today to urge you to sign the intergovernmental agreement. Between Albany County and the City of Laramie for the implementation of the Laramie Growth Area Plan. This agreement represents not just a commitment to smart, sustainable growth. But a significant financial investment and public engagement effort by the county and its residents. On February fifteenth, twenty-twenty-two, this board budgeted a hundred fifty thousand dollars for the development of the plan. That money was spent on professional planning expertise, extensive public engagement. And research to ensure that Albany County's future growth is planned strategically and cost-effectively. This was a major investment of time, resources and community collaboration. And signing this agreement is a step to ensuring that investment leads to real coordinated action. This plan was not created in a vacuum. The county and city worked directly with residents, businesses, landowners and stakeholders. Over two years to craft a vision that reflects the needs and values of our community. Public engagement efforts included kickoff meetings starting in June of twenty-twenty-two. Followed by intergovernmental committee meetings in July, November and January, or July, November twenty-twenty-two and then January twenty-twenty-three. That was joint, um, cooperation between the city council and the sport to shape the details of the plan. The City of Laramie Planning Commission and the Albany County Planning and Zoning Commission. Also held joint work sessions to refine development standards, the review process. That resulted in the Laramie Growth Area Plan. Beyond these sessions, the county and city conducted widespread public engagement campaign. Public hearings were held in September, October and November of twenty-twenty-two. As well as April of twenty-twenty-three into the summer as well. Community outreach included engagements. At events like the Laramie Farmers Market, Laramie Jubilee Days, County Fair Family Night, as well as Freedom Has Birthday. Additionally, two online questionnaires received over two hundred responses. And more than fifty stakeholder interviews were conducted with landowners, developers and local business leaders. This level of engagement demonstrates that the Laramie Growth Area Plan is not just a government initiative. It is the direct result of community input and reflects what Albany County residents want for their future. And I just wanna add that all engagement and responses to this planning effort are included in the append, in appendices of the plan. Which, as, um, Director Gertz mentioned, was adopted by this board as well as city council in twenty-twenty-three. I won't go too much into, uh, what, uh, Director Gertz. Already talked about, the contents of the I G A. And those are direct recommendations that come from this growth area plan that I've, um, tried to paint the picture of. Of how much community engagement, how many resources were spent. Getting to these recommendations. On a side note, I'm incredibly proud to share that the Growth Area Plan has received national recognition, winning the Merit Award. In the comprehensive plan, small jurisdiction category from the American Planning Association's County Planning Division. This is given to one county in the whole country once a year. So this prestigious award underscores how truly outstanding the plan is, not just in its final form. But also in the collaborative and forward-thinking processes that brought it to life. Among all small jurisdictions across the country, Laramie and Albany County have been recognized as a model for innovative planning. And intergovernmental cooperation. This national recognition highlights the importance of our work. And affirms that our approach is setting a new standard in the field of planning. And winning this award also confirms that the work done here is of the highest quality. Aligning with national best practices and demonstrating how. Collaboration between the county and city can lead to a stronger, more sustainable future. This recognition also validates our joint approach to planning. Showing that collaborative efforts can result in more effective, cost-efficient, forward-thinking solutions. By working together, we have created a plan that not only guides smart development, but also ensures. That infrastructure investments are made wise, resources are used efficiently. And the county remains attractive for business and residential growth. Beyond the financial investment and public engagement, signing this agreement is good for business. And for the long-term economic health of Albany County. It provides predictability for development. Giving businesses and property owners clear expectations for zoning, infrastructure and land use. That kind of stability encourages responsible investment and ensures that growth happens in a logical, cost-effective way. Without this agreement. Development could become fragmented, inconsistent, as we've seen in a lot of places on the periphery of the city limits already. Leading to higher costs for taxpayers and unnecessary infrastructure expenses. Coordinating, coordinating planning keeps infrastructure costs under control. When growth happens without a strategy, roads, water and sewer extensions become costly and ineffective. And inefficient. This agreement ensures that development occurs where services are available or can be extended responsibly. Avoiding costly mistakes that taxpayers would ultimately have to bear. It also protects property values by preventing land use conflicts and unregulated sprawl. Keeping Albany County an attractive place to live and do business. Finally, by adopting this plan, we position Albany County for long-term economic success. A clear, well-organized growth strategy makes our county more appealing to businesses. And I say our county because the city is right in the middle of the county and we do see each other as neighbors. A clear, well-organized growth strategy makes our county more appealing to businesses. Developers and investors who rely on a community that is prepared for future opportunities. The City of Laramie City Council will consider this agreement at their meeting this evening. But signing it today ensures a cooperative, efficient future for Albany County. This isn't just about government collaboration, it's about investing in responsible, cost-effective growth. That benefits all residents and businesses. Thank you.
Philip, I have a, a question for you, if you, if you wouldn't mind.
If, if that's okay with Madam.
Yep.
Um, the, the concern about, uh, the city and the water, um. Being brought, even if it's not gonna be annexed, uh, do you have any concerns that the city wouldn't hold up its end of that obligation?
Well, just to clarify, when a property, and this is for a property that does not wish to be annexed, but wants extraterritorial extension.
That's correct.
So, yeah, there is statute that, that. Regulates that process. The, the city is obligated to do that, but certain things do need to be met. City council does have a say in that. But the idea that the I G A is given here, um, commissioner. Is that annexation would be required if any property adjoining or adjacent to city limits wants to develop. Essentially further than a single-family home, wants to subdivide, wants to do commercial. Anything like that would trigger annexation, which would require. All city services, road. Road, sewer, water, all that would need to be, uh, in, in place for any new development like that. But extraterritorial is regulated by state statute. So I, that's how I would answer that.
Okay. Thank you.
I have no comment other than to say to have the city lectures on what's good for the county residents and what's good for the city is a bit laughable. Sorry about that.
Well, and I feel like. Comments were disingenuous because in attending the meetings, it was obvious that they did not care. What county residents talked about, what their concerns were, and they already had their minds made up. As to how they were gonna do this growth plan. And. I don't think it benefits the county residents outside the city limits at all.
Well, I just have to disagree, um, uh, with the, um, one needs to read the, the plan and the appendices. Um, to understand that, uh, there are at least three plans that were presented, both at the fair. At the market, um, and also, um, Jubilee Days went to all three of those booths, um. And made sure that people were engaged in that. Um, eventually, um, I just wanna talk about, we had a comment earlier today that the county. Um, people in the city don't belong in the county. Um. For some reason, that just is amazing to me. Um, we all pay county taxes, whether you're in the city or the county. We're all members of Albany County, um, surprisingly, um, and so. Cooperation and collaboration makes perfect sense, uh, for this organization and the city council, if they really want to do good work. One only needs to look at the fifteenth and Sheridan Street, uh, merging to understand what planning looks like when it's not done well. Um, and what kind of little jogs and streets. And you can only imagine with pipes. Um, I'm a supporter of this. Um. I think, uh, this provides certainty to developers. That says, you know what, maybe your entryways are a great place for, uh, commercial development. Maybe you don't have such, uh, blight, uh, that has been talked about, um, often as you approached Laramie to the south and the north. Um, absent that, we could have spent this money and then we can just put this on the shelf. Um. I find that that's not useful for the county's budget, nor do I find it very useful for the people who took the time. The citizens of Albany County who took the time to fill out the survey and be part of the process, two-years process. This was not a fly-by-night, um, intergovernmental agreements of which I participated in. Um, if there is something that should have been done, I'd love to hear it, um, cause I haven't heard it yet. I've heard. Uh, this is bad and this isn't going to work. I've not heard, this is how we'll make it better. I'd love to hear how we'd make it better. Um. Because it eventually, whether this commission or the next commission determines it needs to do this, this will need to be done. Um, or you will have. And you can talk to the commissioners from Laramie County, how fun it is to have a city that is bound by development that wasn't planned.
I'm glad you brought that up. This was all initiated by the previous commission.
Yeah.
And there's been an election and overwhelmingly. Uh, what I heard from county residents, what I heard from city residents is they're not happy. And there's a huge mass migration and now they can't afford property outside of city limits. Because that cost has been driven up, it's been driven up by the aquifer protection, which is fine if we're gonna protect the aquifer, we're gonna protect the aquifer. But what we've done is we've narrowed the section of property adjacent to Laramie that can be developed and built on. And so we've actually increased the cost to county residents to have to build outside city limits.
Well, I'd love to see the data, um, on that. And I'd also like to, did you participate in, in it when you were a citizen?
Um, no.
Well, that would have been nice to know, right? Like that.
I did. I told you what I, my, my experience was.
Fair enough. Uh, Terry, everybody has a right to disagree. Um, but I would certainly take a look at the comments.
I, I have read through it thoroughly.
Okay.
I, I'm not going into this just. O- on a whim. Um, I've read the documents, I've discussed it with Director Gertz, but. I don't see it being beneficial as it sits right now for county. Adjacent to the city. I understand they're trying to regain. An area of, a span of control outside city limits, but people are specifically moving out of city limits. To escape that. And I understand that the city wants to plan for that, but guarantees for water and sewer hookup are not. The carrot and a really bad stick at this moment. The best I can do on this right now would be to table it for further discussion. But it will not get signed or approved as far as I'm concerned.
How, fair enough. Uh, we'll, we'll table that, but remember. Not every election is permanent. And so every one of them.
I understand that.
Turns. And so at some point, there has to be some collaboration between this commission. And the one going forward and the one previous and, because if not, then, then you end up living in two-year bubbles and that's no way to.
I understand that. I'm sorry, I've used your first name.
Commissioner Gozor.
No, Pete's fine. Okay. Um, but I ran against the city mayor. Obviously, that didn't carry enough weight with county residents to get elected. I'm, I, this was the number one topic that I heard. Is people in the county do not want their city politics. And.
Yeah, that's where the city are part of people in the county.
I understand that, but that's where the representation is.
Encroaching on the people outside of the city limits. That's a problem.
Well, they, this, this commission is the final line for county residents. Anybody inside the city enjoys an additional layer of protection, in fact, several, from multiple departments, and they've chosen that. The folks that sit outside city limits haven't necessarily had that opportunity to choose that. And then if this goes through, it's being forced upon them. So I, I don't, I don't think it's in their worst interest, but I think it's, it's definitely a. For all the money that's been spent and all the time that's been spent on it, it's a poorly developed plan. It is not. For all the money that's been spent and all the time that's been spent on it, it's a poorly developed plan. It is not. That's all I'm going to say about it.
Oh, fair, fair enough. We know where the votes are here today. But I think if you have that perspective, you also have that obligation to make it a better plan. Every plan can be improved.
City doesn't give, the city takes.
Well, I'm not asking about the city, we're the county commission.
Right, but that's why you don't, you don't, you don't want it. You come out the loser in the county every time you deal with the city.
Hmm, I, I find that to be an interesting perspective.
Well, it's because you live in the city.
Yeah, which is also in the county.
Right, but you don't live in the county, so you don't have the same county perspective.
Oh, my goodness. Alright, well, we'll, we'll just have to. I just live in the city.
And this is for consideration, so no further action is going to need to be taken at it.
Alright, it was present for approval.
Oh, it was present for approval.
I will, I, I think you have to make some kind of action.
Okay, well, I, I move to table the intergovernmental agreement between the city of Laramie and the Board of County Commissioners.
Until.
Oh, geez. The March eighteenth. Is that going to be enough time?
Yeah, that's.
Because my next motion will be to deny it.
I'm not trying to be flippant here, that who's going to change it, right?
Okay.
Obviously, I can't change it.
I, I don't appreciate the city having to come here and convince me that it's best for Albany County.
I appreciate that they came.
I, I appreciate that too, but.
Well, and I'll, I'll second that motion, right? I'm not going to be helpful to the process, obviously.
I realize that, but I feel like planning has been pursuing this with a different vote count from the last four years. Does that make sense?
And I, I understand, right? I've been on both sides of the aisle.
I understand.
And it's fun to be on your side of the aisle, it is. But one day you might not be on the other side of the aisle.
Right.
You know, and, and, and.
You just, and so, but that doesn't matter to me. Matter to me is what does government do to the others?
So, I, I don't necessarily, the aisle doesn't matter. I don't care what side of the aisle you're on. I'm talking about the citizens of Albany County. Not having a choice whether this is imposed on them or not. So if you happen to be, say, take Greg Milliken. He's that close to town. I chose not to live that close to town. I don't, I have no fear of where I live right now being, ever being considered for annexation. But the folks that either inherit their property, purchase their property, move here. And then come to find out that they're under the umbrella that the city is pursuing action. To encumber. That, that bothers me. It, it, it hasn't, politics has nothing to do with it, other than the fair representation and I don't want to go pushing. Like I said, tearing down structures in Centennial, that's not what I want to pursue. I, it's, it's a simple implication that they're expanding their buffer with no legal recourse. Other than to accept either annexation or not, or there, there's a lot of ors.
So my whole question is, will you help them, right?
Yeah, absolutely.
Because we hired a plan.
Yeah, it sounds like you spent a lot of money on it.
It sounds like you did pretty well, because it.
Well, no, they did. Those people, when you went in and talked with them and you went to those meetings. It was obvious to every person that lived in the county that was at those meetings. That it was already predetermined what the outcome of those meetings were going to be. Absolutely.
Well, that's your perspective, so.
Well, that's my, not only mine, it's the people that were at those meetings.
So absent a, I mean. Obviously, you have the votes to do whatever you want with this plan, right? But don't you have an obligation to improve it? I, I don't know. I think you do, but that's my perspective, so. I'm willing to hear conversations about it. I'm obviously not the person who can improve it to you two's liking, so whom of you will improve it?
I would like to sit down with. Mr. Gertz and actually steer where we can improve from the county side. And if the city has an option to accommodate or just allow, that puts us another month down the road. I don't think that hurts anything in the city's pers- perspective. It certainly doesn't affect anything with the county.
Fair enough. I think that's, that idea is wonderful.
Okay, and I'd like to sit down with zoning and planning and and get their input. I've listened, I, I have a conflict with the meetings. I have to zoom it. Or use.
Yeah.
Yeah, so. Well, I think that's fair and I think that's, I appreciate that, so.
Okay.
I second your motion to table it to March eighteenth or whatever that date was, I think.
Do you want to go farther out? Do you want to?
No, I, I don't know. Does that give the city enough time?
Can I approach the bench?
We're a little more casual.
Yeah, yeah, I just, I just want to say that. The development of the IGA kind of started in the fall of. Early fall of twenty twenty-four, so we've been at it close to six months. So March eighteenth may be.
Too short.
Too short.
That's fine.
I would say, I mean, if, if I were to give a recommendation, I would say three to six months. And, and then you can go with planning, zoning and.
Okay.
So go six months out. Can we just table it?
Yeah, table it.
I thought we had to have a date. We don't need a date? Okay, it can just be, it can be just tabled.
Okay, I'll move to that we extend the, or we table the IGA.
Until we.
Between the City of Laramie and Board of County Commissioners until we can rectify a position.
That needs to change. Oh, I see, okay.
Sounds good. If you just table it, it lives on your agenda.
Yep.
Can you continually table it?
Okay, thank you.
Do you want to give it a then? I mean. Six months, I mean, let's just.
To be addressed within this calendar year.
Yeah, that's good enough. Okay.
The phone calls begin. But there needs to be a second on that. I'm not seconding.
I'll second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
And I'm opposed. And that's, that's too far. I mean, six months is fine. Ten months is, you know, adding another year.
So what?
Gives us an expiration date.
Yeah.
Well, passed, so.
Commissioner Gozar was a nay.
I got that. Thank you.
Item thirty-three, present for approval, invitation to bid for the purchase and delivery of two. Full-size, four-door, four-wheel-drive or all-wheel-drive pickups. And one full-size, four-door, four-wheel-drive or all-wheel-drive. Sport utility vehicle and direct the clerk to advertise. Well, I wondered what, if that's what you were in here for.
Yes, ma'am. The sheriff couldn't make it. He's in DC. This is our fairly standard proposal to replace some of our more aged vehicles in our fleet. Not sure what else other information I can provide for you.
I move to approve the invitation to bid for the purchase and delivery of two full-size, four-door, four-wheel-drive or all-wheel-drive. Pickup trucks and one full-size, four-door, four-wheel-drive or all-wheel-drive sport utility vehicle and direct the clerk to advertise.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Thank you.
Good job. Item thirty-four is set a work session to discuss county facilities. Did you have something in mind?
I did, no, I just wanted to put it on there so we could come up with a date where we could all sit down as department officials. Chat, okay, so. If you guys would like to do it off. You could do it following the next meeting if you would like, then we're already all here. If that works for you guys, we could definitely just put it after the meeting on the eighteenth, or we could do it before the meeting.
Or a whole other day.
Or a whole other day, just whichever works for you guys.
Do you guys think you could be prepared in two weeks to, to understand your needs, that you could help us understand it?
I mean, I think.
Well, I think it's a discussion.
I think it's going to start the discussions, maybe.
Let's do the eighteenth.
Yeah, I'll find that.
Do you want to do it before or after? Or after? Is that true?
Yep.
Okay.
That's February eighteenth.
February eighteenth, following the regular meeting.
So we set a work session for after the regular meeting on February eighteenth.
Is that something that I can attend?
Yes.
Okay.
We'll say.
Item thirty-five is executive session pursuant to Wyoming Statute sixteen dash four, dash four oh five A. B I I.
Madam Chair, I move, we move the regular session into executive session pursuant to Wyoming State Statute sixteen, four dash four oh five A, Roman numeret seven. Uh, second.
All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye, move into executive session at one ten PM.
So just as a reminder, you'll want to stop your video, stop, stop your sound, and you'll want to stop the recording. Alright. Alright. Thank you, guys.
Yeah.
I moved that we were returned from regular session. Do we need to mention the time at 1:44? With no action taken?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Okay, 38, action if needed? No action needed?
No action taken.
Needed and can take action. Item 39, approved vouchers for January 2025.
If we approve the vouchers for January 2025, I second.
Seeing no more business for the county commissioners?
We need to vote on this.
Oh.
Aye. Aye.
Aye, motion carries. We'll pay the vouchers for 20 over January 2025. Now seeing no further business for the county commissioners may have a motion to return.
You have a motion to move for adjourned. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. I swear I'll get better at this book.
Well, we all will. We'll all keep working on it. Meeting adjourned.
Where's there? Thank you all, appreciate it.
I have a quick question. Moving report to White House.